We did.
On Zoom, we're gonna get started. We'll call to order the October 5th, 2021 meeting. The clerk will call the roll to record attendance.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Graney?
Here.
Hernandez?
Here.
Leahy?
Present.
Lebron Martinez?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Ohio.
And city council.
God bless Zoom.
Come on, Juan, you gotta take your hat off for the National Anthem. Alright, so we, um, we did the pulling of the name, Councilor Tomlin was pulled first, so if there are roll calls, then we'll start with Councilor Tomlin. Uh, with that, um, just, uh, housekeeping, we know there's a big game on today, and we know some counselors are out of dress code, so I just wanna make sure we get it all set and do it correctly here. I'm just gonna-
I just wanna make an announcement that we have a perpetrator in our city council.
Alright, I'll remove it.
You could always put the New York Jets-
Alright, item number one. All right, let's move on.
The only Yankee fan we have in this building.
Item one is a petition for polls and wire location.
Make a motion to schedule a hearing?
Motion be to schedule a hearing. Uh-
Item number two and three, continue on the table.
Second. So for item one is-
Is it item one scheduled as a public hearing?
And we have to schedule a public hearing for it?
I think it's already scheduled.
Was it? Was this one already scheduled?
His petitions come down the road. I think we do have-
This was for November 23rd. Ah, duh, 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 duh.
Yeah, Vinny O'Connell.
That would be a schedule for a public hearing, right?
Yeah, it's gotta go to a public hearing.
He's on there, he's on the Zoom.
Move, number 26 does not go to city council? What? So let's go to 26. Back to one is a-
Make a motion, we open a public hearing? Second.
Second.
Remove from the table, right? So I'll make a motion to remove from the table.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Then I'll make a motion till we open a public hearing.
Second.
Motion is for a public hearing, correct. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that's one. Two or three that are laid on the table?
Well, are we gonna open-
We're gonna do the public hearing?
We're gonna start the public hearing, right?
Yeah, somebody's here on Zoom.
Are you scheduling the public hearing, or is it-
No, it's on.
Well, we're in public hearing right now.
Oh, I thought, that's what I was asking, was this a new one, or we already had it for a public hearing?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
No, we've had this.
Alright, so this is for the public hearing, that's what I was asking, so I wasn't clear.
Well, hopefully it's something from the G and E here.
Yep.
Yeah, they're on Zoom.
I can't see him from my angle.
Vinny is.
Well. Alright, so, motion is to open it for a public hearing. That's what the motion was, I misheard ya. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We do have H G and E on, it's Vinny O'Connell, or Connor?
Connell.
Connell. And we can open it up to, to him.
Uh, good evening, council members. Uh, yes, so, uh, we are petitioning for a poll on the corner of Parker and Dwight Street. Uh, this came up as, um, somewhat of an emergency poll set, uh, last minute. Uh, the customer at 1475 Dwight Street is, uh, going to be performing some exterior work. Uh, I think it's related to some masonry. Uh, and the primary conductors are too close to the building for his contractors to do that work. Uh, so what we proposed is, uh, installing a pole to pull away, uh, the, uh, overhead primary conductors away from the building enough so they can safely work. Um, uh, the area customers were spoken with, uh, there's been no, uh, objections to this poll. Um, and I believe we may have already been permitted for it, uh, preemptively by the city engineer, uh, due to the nature of the work.
Any questions?
No, just the public has to say.
Anyone from the public with regards to Parker and Dwight Street? Anyone online?
Are there any department heads here? Alright.
Anyone else with regards to number one?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
A second.
Motion is to close the public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to grant?
Motion is to grant the-
Second.
-poll. Uh, clerk, there's a roll call for this one, are there? Yeah, clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the petition for the new poll location.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Hernandez.
With your vote, you approve that. Item two?
Two and three are me on the table, go to public comment.
I'll make a motion to take two off the table, so we can find out what's going on with this, so.
I'll second that.
Motion is to take two off the table, is seconded, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Two, the committee on ordinance, who has referred, uh, an order that the handicap spaces on Ivy Ave be condensed to one space in front of eight Ivy Ave, located on the east side of the street, 90 feet north of Dwight Street, recommend that the order be adopted. And that's where it was tabled.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll offer a motion, but I just wanna hear if anybody in the committee wants to speak to this, or what? This has been here for a while.
A while, yeah.
Counselor-
Yeah, I thought-
Thank you, President-
Hold on, hold on, Counselor Bacon first.
Thank you, President McGee. Um, I was in the minority on this vote, in opposition of consolidating the spaces. Historically, we respond to petitions from the residents in terms of either adding or deleting handicap parking spaces, and the two residents on the street have indicated the spaces that are there currently are needed, and therefore I think we should not approve this consolidation. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yeah, so, I'm not sure why this is back on the table, but anyways, um, there's only, there are only two handicap residents that live there, only two. So there shouldn't be three, because currently, the building that is on Ivy Street has issues, especially when it comes during the wintertime, to find parking space, adequate parking spaces. So, there should not have been three to begin with, it should have been only one at one point, and the gentleman that's using, that owns a red vehicle, the red truck, that's, that's using that handicap space, it wasn't even, he never applied for it, or anything like that, he didn't go through the normal process. Only one handicap parking space is in that street, and it's, it's marked correctly. The other two was just thrown in there to throw in there. And that's, that's, that's not right, that's, you're, you're wasting, uh, how would I say, you're wasting, um, you're wasting valuable time with, with employees, you're, you're, the city's spending money getting these employees to put up these, these signs when we don't, when, when they're not needed. And I've taken pictures over the years, I mean, whatever the body wants to do, fine, 'cause I'm over this. I mean, I, I've, I've done my homework, and I was shut down by, uh, several city councilors, and I'm not gonna play this game, you guys wanna continue with this, fine, if you want to, but I'm not gonna play anymore. I've already said my piece, thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Uh, no, I echo the same comments as Counselor Bacon.
Anyone further? Uh, Counselor-
I'd like to offer a motion to deny.
Second. Alright, so, the committee recommended, recommendation was to adopt, you can vote, and just vote to deny it. If you wanna make a vote to deny it, yeah, we can do that. So, but Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, I, um, I know this has been around for about four or five months, and I looked at this area, I'm very familiar with Ivy Avenue, there's a block, you know, on one side, there's a couple houses on the other side. Um, after this came up, maybe about three, four months ago, I went over there and walked that, that whole area, it's only about maybe 75 yards, and I did see that, um, there was a couple spots that were open, um, the committee voted to, uh, consolidate the space, I, I did take a couple photos, I saw a couple photos that were brought forth in the committee, so, um, and I know Juan's over this, and he wants to get this done with and taken care of, but, um, I've always voted usually to go with the ward committee what they want, uh, he's the Ward Six Committee person, counselor, and, uh, I can't go against him on this issue. Um, I believe that, uh, this should be recommended, that this order should be adopted to, uh, consolidate the spaces and, and have the, uh, the one space on one side, one handicap on the other side, and I think that's plenty for the people that live there.
On the motion. Counselor Hernandez is next in the queue. Counselor Hernandez?
Thank you so much, um, Mr. President. Um, the counselor, Anderson Burgos, he did his homework, and, um, despite the fact that there was pictures brought forward, he went, and there was more pictures that he was able to produce showing the unnecessary need for the extra additional spaces, and that's why they're trying to consolidate, because there is residents there that need the space, and all of these spaces are not necessary. I believe that some people are probably utilizing as a convenience, but that shouldn't be so. And so, I would side by Counselor Anderson Burgos, and will not vote to deny the motion. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would remind the body that, at the time that we addressed this matter, there were four handicap spaces, one that had never been marked, and one that was in the book as an extra. We already eliminated that space that wasn't real. The other three are in ordinance, we had one resident from the street come down on multiple occasions relative to this matter. The spaces are used, and I would just remind my colleagues that these spaces are not created for a person, and only people who have a proper handicap placard can park in them. So if a person who has a handicap placard is parking in the handicap space, that is what is the indicator that it's needed. So there are two people who live in the neighborhood who use them every day, and then there are other people who may use them from time to time, who are properly marking their vehicle with the proper handicapped placard, because otherwise people can't park in there at all. And I have also gone down there, and there is parking behind the apartment block. The people who live there are not limited to parking on the street there. And furthermore, the handicap spot that was placed there, was placed there because there were safety concerns raised when it was initially created, for the big trucks to get in and out across the street from the other property on Ivy, that very small street. So, there were many other considerations which were discussed at length in committee. I have never, as long as I've been on the council, had residents object to something happening, and we've gone ahead and made it anyway. We create these spaces at the request of the residents, and we usually only eliminate them at the request of the residents. Thank you.
Counselor Graney?
Yes, Mr. President, I've been in that area numerous times, I've seen all three spaces in use, both morning, noon, and evening, and there is a huge parking lot in back of the, in, in back of the apartment complex that people can use, so I, I believe that, uh, these parking spaces should remain the same. Thank you.
Alright, uh, Counselor McGivern?
Mr. President, I've always, um, gone along with the theory that if a person lives on a residential street, has a handicap placard, and parks there overnight, on the majority of nights, that's the idea of taking a parking spot away, because it's gonna use a car that will be parking on the street regardless, but given the handicap, uh, person the preference. I cannot vote for this this evening, though, because I know there's at least two people that live on that street, I've heard testimony to that, and this consolidates it to one parking place, therefore, it would be two people fighting for one parking place, and, and that, to me, doesn't, doesn't make sense. I don't know where the, uh, the advisory commission was on this, but I think the, uh, there's a need for more information.
Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Do you hear me? Oh my God, here we go again. Okay, so, if, 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 if the issue were trucks, right, getting into that section, then we don't need to put a parking space, it's like putting a Band-Aid on something that needs a, 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 a stitch, right? No. You, you put the accurate, the adequate sign, no parking from here to at least the corner right there, that way the truck has enough space. You don't put a handicap parking space, right? So there's one. Um, secondly, there are three handicap parking spaces, three. There used to be four, but there were physically three, and now we were just trying to remove one. Just one. So that would make two handicap parking spaces for the two residents that live in, on Ivy Street, one across the street from the other. So the third handicap parking space was never needed. As a matter of fact, before the man with the red truck moved into that building, those two hand, handicap parking spaces were never used. He just found it convenient that when he moved into the building, it just happened to be there. He never went through the process to apply for that handicap parking space. So, what does that tell ya? We're getting our city employees to put up signs when they can be putting their hard work, working time into something else, working on the city, making different improvements. We're wasting time. We're wasting time here, and we're wasting money getting our employees to do something that specifically benefits one resident. I'm not gonna mention names, okay, because I wanna be civil, but please, for the, for the love of God, city council, listen to yourselves. You guys are saying, well, I drove by there, and did you talk to all the residents like I did? Did you knock on every single door? No, I did. I spoke to every single resident, and I spent, I can't even count how many days and nights I've counted taking pictures and video of no one using all the handicap parking spaces. This is a no-brainer, okay? A no-brainer. I ju, I don't know what else to tell you guys, I don't, I don't know if I have to make it as simple as A, B, C, D, E, F, G, for crying out loud, this is a simple thing. There are two handicap parking space people that need them, that's it. Not three, but there are three there, that's a waste of space. And if the trucks are an issue, we can adjust that as well. We don't need to put up handicap parking space, so the trucks have, that's a different thing that we need to look at, right? Address it accordingly. Don't put a Band-Aid on it that's gonna affect the people that live in that building. I'm sorry that I'm taking this tone, it's just, like I said, this is, it's like beating a dead horse, I'm sorry.
On the motion.
Alright, Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just, uh, and, I mean, I think, just as you read what is laid on the table, and the handicap spaces on Ivy Street be condensed to one space, so that is part of the problem. As, as this recommendation comes out, it is saying that there would only be one space left. That's what this order says, that's what it says. To be condensed to one space. So I can appreciate, uh, Counselor Anderson Burgos saying that, you know, we should be two, but what we have in front of us says it should be just one. Uh, and, that, that, I mean, and, and I would also say, if, if we were to go down to two, and, and I, I'm not adverse to looking at that, that we need to specifically remove by ordinance which one we wanna take out. So if we're gonna go from three to two, we have to specify which ones were taken out, or which one were taken out. Right now, this does not do it, 'cause this says, if we adopt this, there's only gonna be one handicap parking space on Ivy Street. At least that's the way I interpret condensed to one. So, I mean, I, I'm with Counselor McGivern on this, I think we, we, at minimum, want two, but what this order says, it'll be just one, if we adopt this.
On the motion. Counselor Lisi was next for the first time.
Uh, thank you, I just want to remind folks that what we put on the agenda is simply the order that was filed, and the order was amended in committee to reflect the engineer's recommendation that we eliminate the one extra spot, so that would be the third spot, and remove the signage. So I believe that, um, our president, city council president McGee should have the legal language attached to the order. Um, I know it's been a while since we have taken this up, 'cause it's been tabled for many, many meetings, um, but I am surprised to hear members of the ordinance committee that voted this out, um, with the recommendation that we eliminate the third, uh, handicap spot by ordinance and the sign, still speak to the original order as if that's what's come out of committee. So, um, I, I would, you know, respectfully ask the chair, President McGee, to just read the legal language, I mean, it was right there, loud and clear, and everybody had a copy of this, and so it should be available in your records, and again, I know that it's been tabled for a while, but you do and did have a copy of the language, it says, we're removing one space by ordinance. It outlined which space, and also dictated that we, we would take the sign down. And perhaps, um, I'm not sure if Attorney Dagnan has the language in, in front of, um, her, at, at, at our disposal, and, and could read it, um, for the committee if the, if the chair doesn't have it.
So I have it. I have it.
Oh.
So, attached is Section 1, Section 86, 321, uh, parking, uh, for Article 9 entitled, um, Chapter 86 entitled Traffic and Vehicles, as amended hereby, further amended by following, deleting location Ivy Ave, side east, from .50 feet north of Dwight Street 2, uh, a .20 feet further north, handicap sign, and it gives the placard number. Adding Ivy Ave East, a point north of Dwight, .20 feet further north, handicap parking type. And then deleting, this is the second page, deleting Ivy Ave West, a .50 feet north of Dwight, a .20 feet further north, handicap parking only. So you have one that's deleting, one that's referencing a placard, and then you have another one that's deleting handicap parking only, based on the two things I have attached.
Right, and if I could just follow up and, and clarify there, so on the east side, it was deleting the sign and then moving it slightly forward, and on the other side of the road, the western side of the road, it was deleting the third placard altogether.
Anyone further? Counselor McGivern?
My memory is waking up, the engineer told us that on the east side, by moving that placard, it would be also eliminating another potential parking place on the east side for regular parking.
No, I think it was that this movement actually created the second space, that the way that the sign was positioned previously took up the entire middle section of Ivy Ave, and we were moving it closer, um, to the road, I believe, so that there would be an additional space freed up. So really, we're creating two additional off-street parking spaces, and continuing to provide the two handicap placards that are needed by the two individuals that have a handicap and, um, you know, movement ability issues.
So what's before us is a recommendation from the committee to, uh, recommend that it be adopted. You can go through the process of voting for it, if you vote against it, you'd be voting to deny it, just so I understand, okay? So a motion is to pass the first reading. Unless there's any further questions? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Uh, show of hands?
Alright.
To pass the first reading, all those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
One?
Aye.
Three?
Aye.
Five?
Ladies.
Seven, so pass the first reading. Motion-
Who's the seven?
Did I miscount? You got four here, five, six, up, and six, doesn't pass. I thought I had seven. Alright, so it doesn't pass the first reading.
Alright, so, um, make a motion-
Hey, did you say, uh, President McGee, I'm sorry.
Yep.
President McGee, did you just say you had four in city chambers, city hall, city hall chambers?
No, three, only three, only three.
Well, there was four on screen. So that would make seven.
That's one, two, I got two.
Okay, so make a motion and take item-
Yeah.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion, I believe to a draw.
Alright, so-
Second.
That's out of order.
It is out of order. Okay, I'll make a motion to deny.
Well, it's failed, right? It failed if it did pass the first reading.
Right, I'd love to get there.
That's the whole-
Motion is to get, pass the first reading, second reading, to be passed and ordained. If you vote for it, you vote against it, that would be up or down.
Right.
Right, so if we don't pass the first reading, isn't it?
Then technically-
It's done.
It's gone.
It's gonna be taken up.
Right.
So I make a motion and take item number four to seven and nine.
Now I'll make a motion, we take item three off the table.
I'll second that.
Motion to take item three off the table. Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Oh.
Three, the committee on ordinance has referred that the city council raise the sewer fee to a minimum of 8.05 per 1,000 gallons, uh, but planned for the additional need improvements, uh, recommended that be 7.77 per 1,000 gallons.
I'm gonna make a motion, uh, to amend, uh, the committee recommendation to be, uh, 7.50, but I would also like to add an amendment that beginning on July 1, 2022, the rate would be 8.15, and I do it for two reasons, uh, if I can talk before we get a second.
Alright, so a motion is to decrease the 7.77 to 7.50, but then have further that the following year go to 8.15.
On July 1st.
On July 1st. There are seconds there. That fails for lack of a second.
Okay, then, uh, let me make a motion, uh, that we take a proposal for $7.50.
So a motion is to change the 7.77 to 7.50, that was seconded. Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, let me, uh, even at 7.50, uh, for this fiscal year, we, with 96% collection, and we're doing better, but we're, and we've made some pretty good progress, we're still talking about a $500,000 deficit in that account. And in FY '23, July 1, 2022, the, uh, wastewater treatment budget increases by approximately $540,000. So if we do not address this, uh, both now, to try to keep the deficit at a minimum, at 7.50 would be about $500,000, and consider doing something, uh, to start in July 1, uh, and if we stay at 7.50, July 1 would be approximately, uh, $1.1 million deficit to start with. Uh, you know, I, I've gone through all these numbers, I've tried to come up with something that's as fair as possible, to try to get the collections as high as possible, uh, I know there are people that wanna see the sewer commission, or the DPW commission get to set the rate, but if they get to set the rate, with all due respect, uh, they're gonna raise the rate to what I just said, uh, because that's the information they're gonna get from the superintendent, and that's pretty much what they're gonna do. We've got, you've got, I'll say you for now, or me for now, we for now, but you shortly, will have the authority to review it and go over it, and cut when you can, but, right now, we are making a judgment, if we continue to allow this deficit, somewhere down the line, our bond rating is, our insurance, our interest is gonna go up. I've been told that by bond counsel several times already. We are, when you get complaints about trash collection, when you get complaints about parks not being maintained, when you get customer equality of life complaints, that's a half a million dollars still that's gonna come out of FY '23, because we're gonna be paying off this deficit, and that's if we pass the 7.50. If we stay where we are, we'd be talking somewhere in the vicinity, uh, of 1.4 to 1.5 million dollar deficit. So, we need to act, I'm not, I was not very comfortable with 7.50, but we need to do some, at least 7.50 cuts the 1.5 down to approximately 500,000, uh, and that's a significant jump, and, uh, whoever the incoming mayor is, I can tell you that was one of the hardest things I had to deal with, trying to figure out how to balance the budget. Uh, and again, I encourage you to recognize, these numbers are not made up. FY '23, a significant portion of the increase is because of, uh, long-term debt, that's going up approximately 390- up approximately $390,000 of the $540,000 increase. Some of it's wastewater treatment expenses, administrative costs is hardly going up. We've, we've gotta, at some point, say, "We're gonna pay our bills," and we've gotta meet our obligations. And, uh, long-term, uh, we're gonna pay it one way or the other. But if we're paying it the way we're doing it now, we're depriving people of the services that they pay taxes for, and, uh, we're eventually cutting more services than we have to. Uh, so I'm recommending 750, I do that with sincere concerns, uh, because there's still a half a million dollar deficit, but half a million is better than a million and a half.
Counselor Hernandez.
No, that's fine, because I just wanted some clarification on something that was already removed, because I'm like in the dark here of what happened, and I'm sure that people at home are also in the dark of what happened that are watching us, but I don't think that I have any time to ask for clarifications of what happened with the number two. So I'm completely in the dark. But I don't know if I'm even in the right to ask, because I was, I still have my hand raised, and we were counting, and then all of a sudden, we just moved on to something else, so I'm not sure if I have a privilege to ask.
Yeah, it didn't receive the required votes to pass the first reading.
Oh, so it was supposed to be seven?
Yep.
And so if it was four on the screen, who were the other two that were yes?
I was one.
Uh, there was two others in the chamber that voted for it.
Oh, that's it? Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy.
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate the job that Mayor Murphy is doing, it's not an easy job, and I, I've told this to him private, and I'll say this to everybody, I think he's doing a fantastic job. Um, but having a million and a half shortfall, and they say they're at 96%, I've been talking for years now, getting an outside collection agency, one that will, this is what their job is to do, one is to produce money, one is to send reports showing exactly how much money they've collected, what percentage we're at. Now, I trust Terry, 96%, I'm sure that's the number he's given, but I don't know where this number is coming from. You know, it's 1.5, and if this goes up, it's only gonna, it's gonna go down to 500%. You know, I wanna make sure that all of the taxpayers are making sure that they're getting what they're paying for, and making sure that there's big businesses and people that are, uh, you know, holding the city of Hoyok and not paying to task. Um, so I'm not gonna vote for this. I wanna make sure that we do everything we can, we hire a collection agency, these great employees that we have down at the Sewer Department, this isn't their position to be working non-stop at collections, they have other jobs to do. We should hire a collections agency, and they'll just take a small percentage of whatever they collect. That's what they do, and that's why they want to collect money, uh, you know, they're pit bulls. Thank you.
Counselor Leacy was next, then Counselor Graney.
Uh, thank you. Um, so I do want to just reiterate that we're at 97% collections, and the shortfall on collections is only $500,000. The shortfall is $1,000,000.5, so there's a million dollar operating deficit. Um, if we went to collections and we were able to gain a portion of that $500,000, that would be wonderful. Um, but as long as we don't set a sewer rate that reflects the operations and the cost of operations for managing and operating the sewer plant, um, we are going to be taking money out of the general fund. And I think it was, um, very important that our acting Mayor Murphy made the point that as, if we don't, if we don't create a sewer rate that covers the operating budget, we're taking money out of the general fund. The general fund is what pays for our parks, our pools, our trash pickup, our recycling, all the city services, police and fire, and enforcement of all the building codes. These are the things that dictate our quality of life. So if we're not paying for the sewer with the operating rate, with a rate that reflects the operating budget, we're paying for it out of the general fund, there's less money for all those quality of life services. And to me, quite frankly, this is exactly what those anti-government interests on our body have in mind when they continue to cut the rate or refuse to set a rate that reflects the operating costs. They want those, again, those anti-government interests on our body want it so that there's less money in the general fund, and there's a greater sense of incompetence for what city government can do. And I think that's, um, number one, is unethical, um, number two, I think it's a real disservice to, um, the taxpayers of this community. Um, and then finally, it's one of those, uh, cutting your nose in spite of your face sort of situations, because at the end of the day, we're going to lose our bond rating, which allows us to go after, uh, you know, pools of money for the larger, long-term capital investment and infrastructure projects. So it's so foolish not to set a rate at 777, which would actually cover the cost of the operating budget. Um, but because we have to whittle it down and whittle it down and whittle it down to make compromises, here we are at 750. Um, I mean, I'm inclined to make the amendment for 777, because that is the only realistic rate that's going to cover the services, the operating costs of the sewer service that we have in the city. Thank you.
Counselor Graney.
Yeah, uh, well, I don't know how to follow that, but I'll try. Uh, there's a lot of people in this city who probably can't afford these increases, the increases in taxes that have happened over the year. A lot of people on a fixed income, a lot of people don't have two and three and four salaries coming into their house like some people do, and they can't afford these increases in the sewer. So I suggest that we charge interest on the people who owe the money, and like Counselor Leahy said, get a collection agency in here to get the money. And number three, that the city find another way to fund this deficit, because the people cannot continue to afford these increases, they're gonna be moving out of Hoyok and losing their homes, and I can't vote for these increases anymore. Thank you.
Anyone further? Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just, I think one thing we all agree upon is the bills are gonna be paid. These are a true reflection of what it costs, it's an unfunded mandate by the federal government through the state that we have to take care of the CSO issues within the city. We've done that, most of what we're paying through this budget is debt service for the CSO projects that have been completed. We get some assistance from the federal government later this evening, we'll see some of that in the form of revenue sharing that we'll be getting, our share, which is not enough to do the projects for the city that's the age of the, of the city of Hoyok. The bills are gonna be paid. If you vote against a small increase in the sewer rate, it's coming out of property tax, so let's be honest. If you don't vote for an increase, the cost of running this plant is coming out of property tax, it's gonna get paid. We're gonna have less money to do what we need to do in terms of all the services that we try to provide through the general budget itself. It's unfair, affordability is an issue, but there is interest charged on late payers, and I have a feeling that the deficit that we're, that we're talking about includes the interest that's charged on those who did not pay their bills, and some of those bills are not collectible, as we know, the landlords of some of our buildings have abandoned the buildings, you know, and we have to take them over and hopefully get them back on the tax rolls, which I think the city's been doing a great job of in recent years. But the 750, if I remember, was kind of the compromise rate that was being talked about. It's, it's there, it's there for the taking. Um, if we don't do it soon, there's a good chance some part of that million and a half is gonna come out of free cash, or free cash is gonna be less than what it could be for some of the wonderful projects and services we need to do out there.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just one more point, and with what we are, uh, still trying to collect, we're talking approximately 270 to 300,000. So we're, we're not at the, we're not covering the deficit, and we are making progress. I will say the fact that we can shut things off has definitely improved collections, uh, and that's one of the ways we're getting closer and closer. But the reality is, as Counselor McGivern said, we got, we got, we can either increase this or deduct from our city budget services and cut services that are quality of life issues, uh, in order to save. And even with the highest rate, uh, when I originally projected, the average home was about $21 every three months. Uh, it was about $84, $85 for the average sewer fee home. So at this rate, with the rate proposing now, we're talking, and since we're in the fourth month of the fiscal year, we're really talking, uh, approximately $40 for the year, for $40 to $45 for the year, if we were to increase to 750 tonight. Uh, and it does put us in a situation where we cut that deficit. That doesn't mean we're not gonna continue to try to pursue collections, because we are, uh, and it's been emphasized and it's been carried out. But we've, we've got, we've gotta make a decision, and we gotta make a decision to accept the reality that we do not have a fee currently that can pay the bills. Uh, and until we do, it's gonna hit us both in property taxes, and it's gonna, eventually it's gonna hit us in interest rates, and all of a sudden, we're gonna find out our bond interest, which has been pretty good, and obviously is still pretty good, at some point, it's gonna be negatively impacted, and we're gonna end up paying more, which means we get less when we bond. So, I mean, those are the realities, I try to come up with the best compromise I can. Uh, I just hope, uh, you can see that, uh, potentially that makes it more important, and like I said, in this case, we're talking, uh, potentially $5, $6 a month. Uh, and somewhere down the line, we have to make that judgment. Thank you.
Counselor Leacy, then Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. Um, I do wanna just clarify some of the numbers that Counselor Murphy just, uh, mentioned, uh, the $21 per quarter and roughly $85 for the year was for the median user, it's not the median or average household, because we don't, we don't differentiate between commercial and residential users. So the median, uh, increase is just the middle-of-the-road increase for both commercial, industrial, and residential users. So it's likely that for an individual household, even a household of, you know, four, um, the increase is likely going to be far less than $21 a quarter. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so to my big government colleagues, what I would say is, what our taxpayers are telling us is they want their city government to live within its budget. I respect Mayor Murphy's goal of balancing the sewer fund, and I don't object to it. However, what we need to be doing within our city budget is not spending every single tax dollar we take in from our residents. And because we have been on a spending spree, we have, we're down to almost no free cash. So the bigger argument is that we, as the city government, the folks setting the budget, need to live within the means of the people that are paying for that city budget. So within that umbrella, I accept the argument that we need to move toward balancing the sewer fund. I think we need to have, and we've begun to have, but it keeps getting dropped, the further discussion on how we're going to fund our capital expenses, which is the big expense in the room, which is why you heard me arguing for as much of the ARP of money as possible to be spent on capital expenses, where every taxpayer benefits for 20, 30, or 50 years, the longer the project lasts that we spend that money on. So, but for this point, the position I have maintained is that I would support the lowest rate increase to bring that fund to balance. Now, that we can do the shut-off, and we're up to 94, I think in our water department, we're at like 98, and so to me, that low number, the lower number that we couldn't come together on, where I think it had seven votes maybe at our last meeting, somebody could maybe remind me, I don't have those specific notes in front of me, um, is the way to go to move forward, because we need to compromise. We can't stay with the highest rate, because there's, it's just not manageable by our residents on fixed income. If you can show me a person living on social security that can get the increase each quarter that we're gonna put on them, then okay, but it's not happening. People on fixed incomes are not getting raises on their fixed incomes, except maybe once in three years. So I just think we have to try to balance those things, and I think that's what we're trying to do, and I appreciate your willingness to not get the ideal, but to come in for something that we might be able to do. Thank you.
Counselor Graney.
Uh, Mr. President, I can attest to what people on social security receive. They receive a $30 stipend after the fiscal year in June, $30 to $35. That stipend that they receive is got, brought back to the government to pay Medicare, so their Medicare costs go up with the stipend they receive. That's what people on social security, those are the people who only have social security, that's what they're living on. So when they go to the gas pump today, with the price of gas at $2.15 a gallon, which I paid for today, they don't even have enough money in that increase to fill their gas tank. That's reality, and that's what we have to deal with. Thank you.
So, see, no one else, the motion was to, uh, pass at 750, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the 750 as it was amended.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Graney?
No.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
No.
LeBra Martinez?
Yes.
Leacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Ten years and three nights.
With your vote, you approved the 750.
Thank you.
Onto public comment, was there, was there a sheet? Counselor Murphy, I think the sheet's behind you, forgot to grab it. Is there anyone on there? Anyone for public comment? I would assume no.
No, I, I think it's blank.
And then, anyone online for public comment?
It's blank.
Okay.
You have someone right here.
Two people raised their hands tied.
Okay. So go with first in the chamber.
Okay.
Okay. No, no, no problem. Just wanna make sure we do it correctly. Alright, so full name, address?
Edward Owen, one, my ad, home address or my property address?
Home at, city of Hoyok home address.
120 Front Street, Hoyok.
Alright, and just as a reminder, it's a minute and a half, I will time you at around a minute, I'll let you know.
I just want to say, as a taxpayer in the city of Hoyok, um, I, nobody wants to pay more money for water or sewer, but, um, we also don't wanna lose services either. So I, I think that 750 increase is, it's reasonable, I believe. Thank you.
Next, online?
Joanna May Booty.
What was that?
Joanna May Booty.
Joanna May Booty?
Hi, this, um, I'm at 10 Federal Street in Montague, Mass. I work and spend my money in Holyoke. I, this is not related to this, that thing you're speaking about, but I'm, I'd like to thank Juan Anderson Burgos for emailing me back, but I'd really like to hear from Mayor, Acting Mayor Murphy and Chief Pratt, this is the only way I can get access to them, so thank you for your time.
If you can hear me? Just, just your.
I can hear you now.
Okay. Motion is to suspend the rules to allow, um, out of city.
I think she's done.
Yeah, she's done.
Oh, well, sorry about that.
That's okay, I can repeat myself if I need to, sir.
First on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
I have it, go ahead now, I just wanna make sure we do it correctly, so sorry about that.
Thank you, sir, no, that's okay, I didn't hear you. Um, I, I'm coming to this meeting, and I'd like to thank Juan Anderson Burgos for responding to me, but for the last month or so, I've been trying to get in contact with Chief Pratt and Acting Mayor Murphy. I'm coming to this meeting and I'd like to thank Juan Anderson Burgos for responding to me. For the last month or so, I've been trying to get in contact with Chief Pratt and Acting Mayor Murphy. Juan has tried to help me do this. I've been doing this with a Holyoke resident, Spencer Peterson. And I am just here to make sure that someone does respond to me. So you have my emails and I will continue to attend meetings until someone gets back to me. Thank you for your time.
Can we ask her what it's in regards to, Todd?
Yeah.
No.
We'll, we have-
No.
We'll have a follow-up. Who's the next person?
We'll have one, take care of it.
Spencer Fox Peterson?
Hi, can you, I can't get the video to work, I'm on my phone, so forgive, forgive me. I'm Spencer Fox Peterson, probably, 51 Portland Street, I'm in Ward 6.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm calling to co-sign what Joanna just said as we are working together. But I'm also just going to point out the really obvious thing with the sewage issue. We have police departments that get raises every year. They don't solve our crime issue, crime seems to be persistent. I say we do radical thinking and pay what it costs to pay the workers to deal with our sewage, our literal shit, and, you know, put that money towards health things like sewage. It's pretty basic, so to hear people minimizing it and make comments about four incomes per household, I have two adults and no children in my household and we do actually have four incomes. That's how we pay for things. So to hear these belittling comments is really disappointing, amongst other very dog whistly things I have heard in this meeting today. And I'm not shocked, I'm just going to call it out. So I, along with Joanna, look forward to hearing from you, Mayor Murphy, and also look forward to hearing from Chief Pratt, Mr. Accountability, who does not respond to emails. And I hope you all have a great day and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else online? All right, so there's no other hands online or in the chamber for public comment. Off to communications.
Todd, I'll make a motion that we take, we package four through seven and nine as a package. And these are all, I'm sorry. No, four, five, four, five, and send those to public service.
Four, all right, so motion to suspend rules, take up four and five as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This is an appointment for the Valley Opportunity Council. And five is an appointment for, another one for the member of the Valley Opportunity Council. Both terms will expire, one December 31st, 2022, the other one December 31st, 2023. So those are to public service.
And six?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Six, seven, eight, motion to reappoint.
Motion to take up six, seven, and eight as a package, suspend the rules, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Six is a reappointment of Al Lehman, 19 Thomas Ave, to the Disabilities Commission. Another one is for the Disabilities Commission at seven. And eight is a reappointment of Commissioners on Council on Aging, and there's a list of those people there. These are all reappointments. Any questions, any comments with regards to the reappointment? Online, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Todd, number nine sent to public service as well.
Nine is that the mayor nominate Russ McNiff to the Citizens Advisory Committee. So that'd be for June 30th, 2022. That would go to public service, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
President, can we suspend the rules to take 10, 16, and 17 as a package and refer to committee on finance?
Second.
Most suspended rules take up 10, 16, and 17 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? 10 is an opinion on Professional Services Association, collective bargaining. 16 is a settlement agreement between the City of Hoyok and the local 1693. 17 is an agreement between the City of Hoyok and the Clerical Union. All those to finance?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Mr. President, can we take, suspend the rules, take 11? I think there's a late file from Brennan Murphy-McGee relative to a question I sent, which we can, which can also- So she answered my question, which I put in order, which would be number, number. Anybody want a number?
Mm-hmm.
Can't be too far. There it is, ordered. 47, yeah, so let's just suspend, take 11. Forty, well, 11 and the other one there, the late file, and just suspend and take those up. And just ship those to DGR if we could.
Second.
Suspend the rules, take up 11, 47, and late file C as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? 11 is a communication from the city clerk regarding early voting. As stated as a previous election communication, Baker has signed a supplemental budget containing provisions for extending early voting by mail-in elections held between now and December 15th. The law also provides a local option, in-person voting for municipal elections. To have the in-person voting, the local elections officials must request and recommend it. I'd like to formally request and recommend that the City of Hoyok hold in-person voting for five days prior to municipal election. You will have votes approved for the schedule. The schedule is as follows, Monday, October 25th, 8:30 to 4:30. This is all at the City Hall. October 26th, 8:30 to 4:30. Wednesday, the 27th, 8:30 to 4:30. Thursday, the 28th, 8:30 to 4:30. 29, February 29th, that'd be Friday, October 29th, sorry, 8:30 to 4:30. Thank you for this. 47 is from Counselor Bartley, that the city clerk please send communications to the city council in time for the second meeting in October on the following, which would be the voter turnout, the number of new voting machines, any issues, satisfaction with the current polling locations and general impressions. And then late file C is a communication with, to the full council regarding the questions that were asked by item 47, which was the turnout results, new voting machines, how they worked, polling locations, and a general impression on that. So 47 and 40, and C are to do what?
Ship them to DGR, please.
DGR, and the first one, there needs to be a vote for this?
Oh, sorry about that.
This one is the state's asking for a vote to do the five days of in-person-
For item 11?
What?
Item 11?
Yeah, item 11, yes, sorry.
Make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve item 11?
All right, so motion is approve item 11. Once again, it's October 25th to the 29th, 8:30 to 4:30 here at City Hall to do early voting, or walk-in voting, however they're calling it. Yeah, early voting. So motions received, adopt 11. Clerk will call the roll, they need a roll call for this, for the state.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Anonymous.
With your vote, you approve that. Agenda 47 in late file C to DGNR.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let me go back, I don't want to miss one here.
Thank you, motion received, number 12.
All right, so now we're going out to 12. This is the minutes of the September 7th meeting. Any changes, any questions on the minutes? Seeing none, motion is received.
Motion received.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Make a motion, send number 13 to finance.
Second.
13 to finance, that's the budget reports of the general fund and sewer fund. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
14 to ordinance.
Second. Copy to DGNR, isn't it?
So 14 is planning and development, development letter, H&amp;H Realty Holding for 40, 48 Main Street, and that was to ordinance, we said?
Yeah, copy to DGR, please.
All right, so to ordinance, copy to DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Counselor President, can we take out of order a petition, number 25?
Number 25?
Yeah, we have the, we have the business owner here with us, I'd like to take it out of order.
Motion to suspend the rules, go out of order to number 25. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 25, a petition from Peter Roskoff and a special permit for non-conforming structure.
DGR, please.
473 at 3 Country Club Road. That's to DGNR.
DGNR.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And 15, you can ship to DGR as well, I guess.
Second.
15 is from Alicia Zoller regarding the ARPA fund recommendations. So that would go to DGNR.
Can I just-
Oh, hold on, Counselor Murphy, sorry.
Yeah, I just want to publicly thank a number of the groups that came back in for the second round and for their willingness to go back and review their proposals and try to make things happen at a lesser cost. And there's going to be some, I'm pretty confident that most of the council is going to be happy with what we can do. No, 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 come on. And I will, I want, you know, six or seven agencies came in and they all came in able to do things and get, and I'll start with, I'll just mention, I won't, no, I won't mention anybody. I just want to thank the agencies for meeting with me again, coming in and telling me what they could do if they got less money. And in many cases, they are able to do a lot of things that are going to be better off than we were before. So I just want to thank them for coming in and interpreting their pencils. And I'll speak about them when we get to the next time.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, Mr. President, I do want to, just through the chair to Acting Mayor, I want to thank the Acting Mayor. And just so the president knows, you know, I've, I had a disagreement with the Acting Mayor that night. But you know what I did? I walked over and shook his hand twice. So there's no hard feelings, you know, I got, we got speeches at the last meeting and we got, we got comments tonight about whatever government stuff, whoever we are. But I walked over, now we had a heated argument, but it wasn't personal, we shook hands. Now, that's not on camera, Mr. President. And maybe other counselors see things what they, what they want to see. But I've, I've probably had arguments, everybody at the room. But inevitably, I'll go, I'll shake, I'll shake their hands after a meeting. So I think that's, that's the way those events in government should operate. So I just want to say, through the chair, thank you, Acting Mayor Murphy.
Thank you, Counselor Bartley.
Someone else have-
Where's this going?
That one went to DGNR.
DGNR, okay.
All right. 18, communication from Counselor Bartley, quick claim deed regarding-
Yeah, this is a motion to receive, just send a copy to DGR. If I can make two, one quick comment, Mr. Mayor-
Counselor-
Mr. President?
Yep.
Yeah, why am I doing this? This is a deed for $4.55 million for one, for, for Hampden Papers. And, and again, it just goes to what this body did, you know, five, almost five years ago now, by, with the marijuana industry. So we're just going to, we're just going to send a copy, I just want to send a copy to committee just for a very brief discussion. There's nothing we can do about it, it's a property deed, it's all, we've seen a million of these, right? But I just wanted for the record that this is something the body should be proud of because that's kind of some serious investment in, in, you know, in older, in older areas of town. And, and so these things are really happening and, and I just hope that the public's aware of that. And, and I know Assessor Doolittle is aware of it because he's the one that called me about the property deed coming through. So Tony's aware and he's on point. Thank you.
So motion is to receive 18, a copy to DGNR.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 19 is a grant, planning assistance grant. So that would go to finance, all those in favor?
I could, Mr. President, please-
Counselor McGivern?
I apologize, I didn't read a copy of this, but is this a communication because we can't adopt?
Isn't that the completed form?
It's a report.
It's a report?
It's a report. You can send it to DGR, Joe. Because this is what Jimmy and I filed a few years ago.
Right, yeah.
So, yeah, this is good, I missed that point. So 19 and 20, just suspend, ship them as a package to DGR.
Second.
All right, so motion to suspend the rules, take 19 and 20 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And send those to DGNR, it's grant reporting updates.
Good, excellent.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 21 is from the Board of Fire Commissioner.
Motion received.
Motion is received, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
22 and 23, I think we just suspend and ship them to ordinance.
Second.
22 is from 876 Grow, 360 E Ray Street.
They've already happened, so.
It's the outreach meeting.
They get sent over to ordinance usually.
It's a copy for the record.
Because we have to apply.
And 23 is another outreach meeting for 84 North Bridge Street. So motion is to receive and send to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Petitions. Petition for a livery license, 337 High Street.
Finance?
Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 25, we already did. 26, oh, sorry. 26 was, this is not supposed to be here, it's removed. It did not go to council yet, so 26 doesn't really exist.
Okay, 27?
27 is a petition for-
Ordinance.
Yep, so One Maple Crest, that's the ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Our one to Dr. Arm. And a copy to planning.
It's a big change.
That'll be a change.
Yeah.
All right. President's report, just a few things quickly. Let's see, the Whiting Reservoir Study Committee is meeting this Thursday in here. You can come into the chamber or via Zoom, public comment is welcome. 6:30 or 6? So, so that'll be in here, just once again, Thursday, public comment. They're going to give an update on everything they've been doing, the committee's been doing phenomenal. And we'll get to the time for, six o'clock, six o'clock Thursday. Engineering is requesting that for any traffic issues that we fall in order for, if there's going to be a cost associated with it, instead of adopting it right away, that we at least send it to committee to see if they have another way of doing it to make it cheaper. So they're just asking that as a, as an update. Because we do approve things, we want them done quickly, I get it. But they're asking for that because sometimes they can't bear the cost of it. So it does make sense. Order to the, that we request that we start making more copies to other department heads, kind of like what Jeffrey just asked, which was for planning. So if we know it offhand and I miss it or something, let's try and get copies to the other departments so that way we keep them in the loop. Some of them have been not getting the communications and we're not, you know, we'll try and do better at it. Debate is 10:28 for the mayor's debate at the Hoyok High School. They were looking to do it in here, just to let you know. We were trying to accommodate for that, but ultimately the high school did get back to them, so it will be at the high school on the 28th. On the 6th, starting tomorrow is the mask mandate. We got a communication from Sean in the Board of Health that there'll be an indoor or a mask mandate for the City of Hoyok that's lasting to December 30, or December 1st. And it'll be indoors even if you are vaccinated. I read the whole report I got just before I came down here, but I figured I'd give the update because it came from Sean. And if anyone on Zoom has an issue tonight, I should have said this earlier, the system went down the other night during the meeting. If you can't hear us, text us or something, but Scott said to give you the heads up in case something does happen. So far it didn't, but hopefully we go from there. That's all I got for reports, anyone? Counselor Graney?
Yeah, just quickly, sometimes, you know, we get some comments, you know, coming over the screen and we don't have an opportunity to respond. But when we make assessments here on the council, if I make an assessment that there are people, more people living in one house that are paying the fee, when I'm simply trying to point out as a fact that some, some people in some households can afford it much more than others, that's a fact. And I think we should deal in facts here and put emotions aside. Also, I think that the council, there are many, many articles out there on ageism and I suggest that some of the council members, you know, it would be a good read for a lot of- of us to, to, to seek, seek some input on this issue, that's a very, very prevalent issue in our society, and I know many people who have, 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 have experienced it in no uncertain terms, so it's just, just a couple of comments I'd like to make and get it out there, but that one, at some point in time, you know, every resident in this country, if they're fortunate, they get a chance to live a long and fruitful life and contribute to the community, and I think it's a, it's an issue out there that's worth looking into, thank you very much.
All right, so, aunt's report, oh, Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just a couple of things, today I did go to Wisteria Hurst, and I just want to make sure that the public that is listening, the gardens, first of all, they're beautiful, and they are open to the public, free of charge from dawn to dusk, and I know, as I've talked to people, a lot of people did not know that, so I know Channel twenty-two covered it today, and I just want to make that announcement, I know a lot of people watch this, so they're still, even though the plant sale ended today, I believe, they are, you know, volunteer gardeners, and they are looking for more gardeners, they are also looking for more Hoyokers to volunteer, so I just want to encourage that, I also want to indicate that the Whiting Reservoir meeting is going to be translated into Spanish as well, I did work with Transfluency to cover that, you had approved the transfer to the mayor's office to cover a stenographer, we transferred it to make this, so that is happening on Thursday night as well, and, you know, I just appreciate that, the department heads that I've worked with, we've all tried to work and do things, so I just want to express my gratitude for the cooperation that they have given me, and, you know, we had our Wisteria Hurst person, it was her, she started her fourth week, so she's very enthusiastic, she's doing a great job, and, you know, she was definitely very happy that we were promoting Wisteria Hurst today, so, and they're trying to promote programs to live within the mask mandate, but they're trying to promote as many programs as they can, trying to keep spacing and everything else, so I just want to make sure the public is aware, those gardens are outdoors, they're free of charge, dawn to dusk.
Thank you, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I'm just going to follow up on a couple of things, and just make a couple of quick, I rarely do this, so, first of all, on the Whiting Street Reservoir Commission, that's very exciting news, that was Counselor Sullivan and myself that put together that ordinance, so we want to just make note of that, second of all, regarding the bylaws on, regarding the, the financial transfer for a DPW, I'm going to suggest that the President talk to the Ms. McManus, and we should maybe amend our rules, because if that's the case, then, you know, everything has a cost to it, so there should be some kind of a dollar value on there, and we should, we should reflect that in our city council rules, that if transfers to DPW having a financial cost automatically have to go to the Finance Committee, so, and I just don't think we can just say that here and remember it. Relative to, to, relative to flowers, if you want to see some beautiful flowers, some beautiful mums, you can go to my traffic island, and over at the front of Calvary, and there's eight or nine of them over there, and they're absolutely gorgeous, and they're free, and then, you know, you can walk around, look at those, and you can help me clean it up, which is, I do that on almost a daily basis, there's, I got a call today, there's a flag raising for the Puerto Rican flag on October fifteenth at three thirty, I thought the public would want to be, know about that in front of City Hall, I thought the public could also be interested in knowing that we had a dedication for Mrs. Burks at, for the old Blessed Sacrament today, so several of us attended that, Mr. Greeney, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Sullivan, attended that as well, it was a very emotional thing for the former school board member, Dennis Burks, and his spouse, who's a current school board member, so we congratulated them as well on, on that. And then, the last thing, Mr. President, I don't think I mentioned before, but a few of us attended the, the grand opening of that, that thing we jigged up there, Venture X, and that was, that was pretty good, so it's kind of an exciting thing, a new investment in Hoyok, and, so I hope people are aware of that, and, end of story.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, thank you, and I got the email, I think also it's got the email tomorrow at Veterans Park, I think the Gas Electric is putting on an event, I believe it's four to six, a police department will be there, fire department, food trucks, things for kids, ice cream, electric vehicles from, I believe, Markat Ford and Gary Rome, so it should be a good event for everybody in the city to come down to, to see how, how great our municipal electric light company is providing services to the citizens of Hoyok.
All right, so now we're on to reports of committee, ordinance is the first, twenty-eight, that the community ordinance was referred, a special permit in recreation marijuana retail establishment at eighty-nine South Street, recommend that it be adopted with the following conditions, that the owner of the building always pay commercial property tax rates to extend, allowed by federal, state, and local laws for the duration of the special permit, that the business retain a minimum of thirty percent of Hoyok residents for non-security jobs, that the hiring preference be given to security personnel that are retired Hoyok police or retired members of another police department that now lives in the city of Hoyok, there shall be no marijuana consumption allowed on site, that the hours of operation be set according to city ordinances, that all outstanding issues identified by the planning department letter or the engineer letter be addressed. Motion be to receive, adopt, pass the first reading, Counselor Lisi?
Thank you, this one is pretty straightforward.
Oh, this is straightforward, sorry, so just motions, receive, adopt, sorry, apologize. Counselor Lisi?
Yes, thank you, motion to receive and adopt, so this is pretty straightforward, it was a special permit application for First City Provisions for both manufacturing and a retail establishment permit, they want to locate at eighty-nine South Street, and First City Provisions is a group of, you know, semi-local folks, Springfield-based folks that are connected to Hoyok and, and keeping it local, I think that there are a number of principles of color in this particular business, which is, again, very exciting for, for this industry, because it is, in many ways, a reparations policy, so they had a really tight application package, it's not going to be the biggest business, they're probably going to be hiring up to twenty employees, twenty-five employees at max, but another local business that's doing both grow and retail.
Anyone further? Counselor Greeney?
Yeah, just, could you put the crosshairs on eighty-nine South to give me an exact location?
It was...
The buses are, school buses? Used to be Craft Mount?
Almost on the main street on the left.
On the left, used to be Craft Mount, huh?
Where do school buses are?
Yep, the school on the...
Okay.
One, one thing, Counselor Lisi, Counselor Anderson Burgos, Counselor Hernandez, do I sign your name to this, seeing how the jacket's now in here for signing?
Yeah, my...
All right, just want to make sure. So, get it on the record. Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I, I would, having known this family for probably going on almost thirty-five years, I can attest to their commitment to civic engagement, I'm kind of excited that they're, that they're in Hoyok, and, you know, they're definitely, definitely a Springfield-based family, but they're, they're great, great people with a, with a commitment to, I think, civic engagement as well, and I'm glad they're, they're here, maybe starting a, a business opportunity in, in the city, so I would speak in favor of this, thank you.
All right, seeing no one further, the clerk will call the roll if you vote yes, you're voting for that with the conditions as read.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Hernandez? Hernandez? Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Twelve yeses.
Your vote, you approved it. Twenty-eight B, the community ordinance was referred in order for a street vendor license for Nicole Ortiz for one sixty-four Ray Street and seventy-three Sergeant Street, recommended that be adopted, under discussion, Counselor Lisi?
Thank you, motion that the item be adopted, I will just note that I had to leave this meeting a little bit early, and so I don't have all the details here, so if folks want additional details about the food truck operation, I would defer to Counselor Bacon.
Counselor Bacon?
I would just note that this individual came in and applied to have the food truck at two different sites, and so that she could have flexibility, we are recommending that she be able to have her truck site Monday through Sunday, eight to eight, which the ordinances allow, so that there could be flexibility, other than that, everything was in order with the application, and so we recommended that the council approve the license.
Anyone further? So clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the vendor license.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy? LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Anonymous?
Your vote, you approved twenty-eight B, twenty-eight C, the community ordinance was referred in order that the position of professional accountant that has been budgeted for the auditor department for fiscal year twenty twenty-two be assigned a grade ten of Schedule A of classification, recommended that the order be adopted.
A motion to receive and adopt, but again, I was out for this item in particular, so deferring to Counselor Bacon for any further details.
Okay, before I get to Counselor Bacon, once again, Counselor Lisi, Counselor Anderson Burgos, Counselor Hernandez, just sign your name to...
Yep, thank you.
Okay, just making sure, thank you, Counselor Bacon?
So just to clarify the procedure, do we just need a simple receipt on this, this, because it's amending the ordinance?
Even an amendment to the ordinance should be, motion to pass the first reading.
I thought we needed readings, but I just wanted to check.
Yeah, since it is an amendment, I would go with the first, second, and then ordinance.
Okay, okay, so I'll offer the motion to pass the first reading.
Second.
Motion is passed first reading, under discussion, Counselor Bacon?
And so, under this, we did confirm that the position is budgeted, so that it will be able to be supported in the budget for the grade ten, and just as a reminder, we had included this in the budget prior, so this is finalizing that position in the auditor's office. It's pretty straightforward.
Okay, seeing...
So motion to pass the second reading?
So motion is pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the change.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy? LeBron Martinez? Lisi?
She's muted, she's there.
Yes, yes, I'm, sorry.
Okay.
I say yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Anonymous?
Your vote, you approve that one, off to finance, twenty-nine A, community finance was referred, petition for a new second-hand license at the mall for GameStop, recommend that be adopted.
Make a motion to adopt.
Motion to receive, adopt, under discussion, Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President, we had the assistant manager and new manager of the GameStop in for this license, Devin Marr, he did tell us, and he was well aware of the state law and the, not even with, with just that it's a state law, but with working with the Hoyok Police Department on anything that, that the store buys and resells, what they use this license for is the resale of games, trade-ins, and, for purchases in the store, and tablets and things that they can do through the website, the, the manager was well, they use an ID copy system, and was well aware of working with the police department, as I said, the committee recommends we adopt it.
No one further, motion would be to receive and adopt to grant the, it's not a renewal, so it's a new license.
It's a new license, because I think it's a new manager, we've gone through this a couple of times now.
Should we do a roll call, because it's a new license?
Uh, please, be safe.
So, with that, we'll do a roll call, because it's a new license, even though it's the same spot, clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting to grant the second-hand license.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Anonymous?
Your vote, you pass that, I was just pulled aside and told to give an update, Red Sox are up two, nothing in the top, top of the second, top of the second, all right, I've done my job.
Excellent, go Boston.
Go Sox.
Go Boston.
All right.
Are you okay, Mr. President?
I'm getting a little hot in up here. Anyway.
Stop it, leave Todd alone.
We're on to twenty-nine B, community finance was referred, in order that MIFA Victory Theater project funding recommended be adopted, so this is the CPA fiscal year twenty-one funding, and they recommend it be adopted, motion be receive, adopt, under discussion, Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President, we had, of course, our city council liaison, Counselor Sullivan, as always, from the CPA committee, and Don Sanders from MIFA, Counselor Sullivan deferred to Mr. Sanders, who told us that this, this restoration CPA grant is for a restoration of two murals that were, are, and were part of the Victory Theater, on the inside, the money would be used to restore both murals, they would also, they already been removed in our storage, but they would be used to restore these, and to be put on public display in a very safe way, according to Mr. Sanders, in terms of, and actually the public display would be here in Hoyok City Hall upstairs in the auditorium, the, the dollars were, the CPA dollars is four thousand five hundred plus seven thousand, the total cost is ninety-five hundred, I believe, Mike, if I'm reading it correctly?
I don't have my notes here.
Ninety-five thousand five.
Yeah, but there's, it's, it's not, not all the money is coming from CPA, but a portion of it is, the most important language we heard that evening, although I think it's great to restore these two murals, because we sit in a room that, we've had these murals restored before, and to keep them for, in preservation is important, is if, for any reason, the Victory Theater does not reopen its doors, the city would, would take over ownership of both of these murals, and they would not be, you know, they would not be sold off to, to anyone. Committee recommends to adopt.
Counselor Greeney?
Yeah, just, just quickly, I'm going to vote, obviously, to vote in favor of this, but I think at some point in time, we're going to need an in-game for the Victory Theater, because once again, it's been twenty years, and I'm still seeing Victory is Ours with the boarded up front of the Victory Theater, it's getting to the point where I would like to see something, you know, but there has been nothing that's been shown so far, and we're, we're continuing, you know, we're continuing to, to, to play this Victory Theater, Victory Theater we're going to open, well, I'd like to see something happen in the very near future, that would be great, that, that the people of Hoyok could enjoy, something they could enjoy, maybe these murals would be something that they can enjoy, I hope, but at some point in time, the Victory Theater has to, has to appear, thank you.
Counselor Anderson Burgos?
I, you know, I agree that the Victory Theater, you know, there's, we're not seeing enough, but I think in order to understand, you have to look at the process of, you know, what's taking so long and why it's taking so long, and I've been to Victory Theater and, and met with the folks quite a few times, and what most people don't understand is that the Victory Theater is not, you can't start work on a portion of it, you can't start work, you need to have all the money so that the, the work can begin, it's, it's a, it's[1733.32] It's, it's a, it's a matter of just raising enough funds to start getting the work started, to start getting it, you know, to start it up. So it's going to take, it's going to take a while, but it's eventually going to get there. And the city will benefit huge, huge benefit.
Council Leah?
Yeah, thank you, if you want to, Council Graney, I'll file an order and put your name on it, and have them come in front of the public service, because I believe the last time I filed this order, I was told that December of this year, they're going to have about fifty million dollars of tax credits and getting ready to go. I don't have that in my notes in front of me, but that's from memory, so I would like to hear an update on this.
Council Graney?
Mr. President, at that last meeting, I believe that the director told us that they were seventeen million dollars short. So I don't know how much money they've raised since then, but seventeen million dollars is a substantial amount of money.
So with that, this one's for the CPA. Clerk will call a roll if you vote yes, you're voting to approve the recommendation of giving the funds.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon? Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez? Hernandez? Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Yes.
She's back.
I know that I missed it, but yes, for me too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Four yeas, one nine.
With your vote, you approve that one. Twenty-nine C, committee on Finance was in order, the arson watch reward program, one thousand dollar, no match, recommended that be adopted.
Make a second to pass the first reading.
Motion to receive, adopt, pass first reading, Council McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President, we had Chief Preskowalski and Lieutenant Maria Pelcher before us. This was an award that was given to a Blessed Sacrament student for third place in the poster contest statewide. The student was Rafael Rivera, the grant goes to the, to the fire department, the award goes to the fire department, but our congratulations go to Rafael for doing such a great job. Maria told us. And thanks to Rafael, Maria told us that she will be using this to do the wonderful things that we've all seen her do throughout the school system and throughout the city in terms of fire prevention, education, and many things that she does, especially working with schoolchildren, and she'll continue all his efforts and put this to good use.
So Council Bartley?
Yeah, just through the chair to Joe, I missed the first part of that meeting, as you know, and I called in.
You did. Job, thanks a lot. He was excused for the first part.
I called in. If I could, through the finance chair, Joe, can we, A, can we see a copy of that, and B, I did have a conversation with the One Hoyok CDC Executive Director, who advises me that he has some kind of technology down there to, you know, copy posters and, you know, spread them all over the place, so if that's something that Ms. Pelcher wants to do, Lieutenant Pelcher can maybe get in touch with the One Hoyok CDC Executive Director and see if we can get the, if I was certainly late to see a copy of it, we could put it somewhere in here for a little while too, which that would be nice.
Do you want to reach out, see if we can get a copy of that? So we'll, we'll see if we can get a copy of that and put it up here in the chamber.
Fantastic idea, Council.
Great idea, yeah.
So.
Thank you, guys.
So twenty-nine C, pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading, the clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you vote for this grant.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Anonymous?
With your vote, you approve that one. Twenty-nine D, committee on Finance who was hereby to approve fiscal year 2022, the CRCC PVPC CSO.
Hey, that's fast.
Hey, that's three times.
Seven hundred and forty-five thousand, no match, recommended that be adopted, motion be receive, adopt, pass the first reading, Council McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President, we had Mike McManus from the DPW, this is the annual share of the CSO money that we get through the state, that's the Connecticut River Valley cleanup of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for our combined sewer overflow problems, I stated earlier when we're talking about the sewer rate. This helps us offset some of the depth that we go into. Mr. McManus talked about three projects that are ongoing, and also that the current, or the next up to the plate, I guess is what we call it, the Jackson Street Project, is, is a big part of where this money is going to go to. We also have a Springdale coming, Springdale, Springdale Pond Project coming up, and the River, the River Taylor Project will be certainly in the, in the loop, and the Hopper coming up very, very quickly. This is part of our mandate by the federal government, state government, to clean up the Connecticut River, I think it's something we all want to do, we just wish that the share of money would be a little bit bigger, or the revenue sharing from the federal government would be a little bit bigger, but I know Council Murphy has some stuff coming down the road, that Acting Mayor Murphy will be, that will be, that will help out in these areas. Note that last year, our engineer came in, Bob Parent, and he quickly announced our share was the biggest of the three communities we share with both Chickaby and Springfield. He sent Mr. McManus in this year because we are the second biggest, Springfield got a little bit more than we did this year, but we're second, we'll take the seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, I hope, motion of the committee is to adopt.
Anyone further? Seeing none, pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading, the clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the grant.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Anonymous?
With your vote, you approve that one. Twenty-nine E, committee on Finance who is hereby accept the Commonwealth Security Trust Fund, eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty-dollar grant, recommend that be adopted, motion be receive, adopt, pass the first reading, under discussion, Council McGivern.
President, we had Chief Preskowalski talk about this grant, this is an annual grant that reoccurs just about every year. His proposal is to use it for equipment this year, they're looking to purchase two ice rescue sleds and two water suits, you know, for firefighters who go on water rescues that would protect them from cold water. The equipment cost would be the sleds are four thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars apiece, the suits are one thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, the committee recommends that the, that we accept the grant and agree with the chief that these are two good uses to put the money towards, there is no match.
Anyone further? Seeing none, motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading, the clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for this grant.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney? Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Anonymous?
With your vote, you approve that grant, twenty-nine F.
President, we could take, I think we can do item twenty-nine F and twenty-nine G as a package.
suspend the rolls, twenty-nine F and G together?
All right, motion suspend the rolls, take them up as a package, all those in favor? All opposed? Twenty-nine F is an order that the amount of one thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars be authorized from the city solicitor department professionals for services rendered unencumbered in 2021. G is committee on Finance who was referred six hundred dollars authorized for the city solicitor for outstanding bills, is really what it is, both to be, recommended that be adopted, under discussion, Council McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President, we had Attorney, and I hope I'm pronouncing your name right, Attorney Yaganin before us, and we, and we talked about, these are bills that came in late, they're connected to a workman's comp issue with the DPW, and the legal services is connected to the city side of always vetting any workman's comp issues with the, with the correct agency, as, as I think, we know, and I'm doing a terrible job of explaining it, but we also had our auditor with us, as we always do during the finance committee, and she verified the legitimacy that the, both, all the bills that were unencumbered have been vetted out. Our city solicitor is pointing out that the money to be used for this is from this current year is in legal services, and there's enough money there to cover these bills at the moment. The committee feels that these are bills that are owed, the city should pay them, and the committee recommends that we adopt both.
So motion be to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion be to pass the second reading, clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for both of them together.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney? Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy? LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi? Lisi? McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven yeas.
With your vote, you approve that one. Twenty-nine H, committee on Finance was referred hereby appropriate and transfer in fiscal year 2022, one hundred forty-nine thousand seventy-six dollars, two, and then there's several parts, school personnel, other expenses, tuition assessment, school choice assessment, for the total of one forty-nine oh six, recommended that be adopted, motion be receive, adopt, pass the first reading, Council McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President, we had both our receivers, Superintendent Anthony Soto and our auditor speak on this issue. This is, quite frankly, a, an adjustment to the recap sheet, to what we, many of us call the cherry sheet, because the House Conference Committee and the budget for the state came out with, came out with their final numbers, so this would balance the budget, it's, it's not something we're going to see in either side of the school budget or the city side of the budget, except on the recap sheet, we have to do this in order to, to, when we get ready to, to balance the budget with our final vote.
Anyone further? Seeing none, motion is pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading, clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for this one, the transfer.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney? Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Anonymous?
With your vote, you approve that one. Twenty-nine I, committee on Finance who requests a hundred twenty-five thousand from reserves, court, dispatch, patrolmen, lieutenants, to overtime, recommend that be adopted, motion be receive, adopt, pass the first reading, Council McGivern.
President, we had Chief Pratt in before the committee, we had a lengthy discussion on what's going on in the police department in terms of the budget, and what's going on in terms of his overtime account, I know Mayor Murphy's been working close with the police department and fire department on doing their best to keep overtime costs down. Chief Pratt told us he's, he's looking for this transfer, first of all, where the money is coming from, reserves and training, I think we've heard this, but it's, the Police Reform Act is making it almost impossible for the police departments to use reserves the way they used to use them, to replace officers that might be out sick, or might be out injured, or might be out on vacation, and, and he said unfortunately, he still, we have reserves that are still in training, and they will eventually become offered full-time positions, but the, we used to, for years, see these officers gain, not just gain their experience by being sent to the academy, but by doing different types of jobs with experienced police officers, even before they were appointed permanently. It's, it's, they're hoping, the state legislature is trying to work on the Police Reform Act to try to, to, to address this and to make more sense out of it, but at the moment, the police department has to live with it. The money coming out of the, the courts is, and, and I think many of us that work in the courts can attest to it, that the, the court system in terms of bringing in police officers to testify is still very slow, the jury trials are taking place, motions to suppress are taking place, and we are seeing more and more officers being called in, but he feels that he still has enough in this account, even if the floodgates start to open up to get through the rest of the fiscal year. The extra money in dispatch was a vacancy, and there was a vacancy also in the patrolman and the lieutenant line item, and there's some vacancies that he hopes to fill soon in the patrol officers, and that justifies where the money's coming from. He's asking to add a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to his budget, this, what he told us is he is averaging, which has been holding true now for I think a year or two, about thirty-eight thousand dollars per pay period in overtime cost. This is enhanced a little bit because he can't use the reserves, but he's trying to manage it the best he can, and at the same time, not let any, any neighborhood or any patrol car be taken off the road because he doesn't have someone to replace it. This, this would bring him into, not the end of the year, but it would bring him, you know, through at least, I believe, the next, Mayor, can you help me out? I think the next three or four pay periods?
I think it was into mid-November.
Into November, okay. And then he'll, you know, adjust and see where he is in terms of what to do after that. I believe we cut this budget, or between the mayor and the city council, we did cut this budget down to, down to like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the annual cost has been running about one point one million, and we're, I don't want to say we're on track, but we're somewhere in that neighborhood.
Council Murphy?
Yeah, just, what Council McGivern said, in relation to the police reform, obviously there's a lot of good goals in the police reform, but there are concerns in terms of some of the things regarding reserves, regarding auxiliary police, and a variety of things, and, and we are having, the number of people applying is also down substantially from where we've been in the past, so I know, you know, a lot of police departments are a lot of police departments are trying to work to maybe ease up some of the things and make it a little easier to bring people on board. I know our goal, if I'm not mistaken, was thirty-five reserve officers. And I think we're at nine or ten. Uh, and, and then they don't, then they need specific training in order to go do things. So it's become a little more complicated. Uh, I know the chief, and we've talked about it, is trying to stay ahead of the game in terms of overtime without getting to the point where he doesn't have the money there and can't hire when we really need to. Uh, so he's trying to stay a month or two ahead as he makes these requests. Uh, and I think that's the right way to go. Hopefully, we're going to get some updates in terms of, uh, they're talking special police, they're talking auxiliary, uh, and a few other things. So hopefully, uh, as some of these reforms are amended to make them, so you can have a functional police department while still doing the reforms, we'll be in a better position to both attract people and to have people fully trained so they can be out there. So, I appreciate what he has done in terms of trying to make sure he stays ahead of this.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, just through the chair of the acting mayor, uh, and since you brought it up, Terry, uh, at some point, and not tonight, can we get an update on where we are with the auxiliary police in terms of, uh, in terms of their, their compensation and in terms on their budget? And, uh, and then, uh, at some point, I, I guess, because I missed this part of me too, I was, again, I, I excuse myself. But at some point, uh, I, I, I think we've got to hear a little more in depth from, from, from you if we could, or at least I would like to, just about the, the overtime picture for, for the two major departments. Because, you know, we, we cut the court and yet we can, and, and we, and we get the blowback on that, Mr. President. But here we are, the, the chief himself cutting another forty grand. And, and we said it that night, the darn things are closed. And, no, no, you gotta put the money in there. Well, you guys budgeted it. You, and you're knowing that the court's been closed. And, and they won't give anything back. So if they'd been a little more giving at the time, I don't want to hear, city council, municipal city council, cut the overtime budget. You're cutting your own budget, Mr. Chief of Police. So do it right. And we said that, that night, we said it, the courts are closed. How are you going to come and, and convince the world that you need overtime for courts that are closed when we need it? But you know, they don't want to give an inch. And now, here they go again. And we're, we're giving them a pat on the head for, for getting ahead of it? I mean, look, I, I, I get this is a complicated deal, but you, you know, there's a give and take in a budget, Mr. President. And, you know, I think most of us can respect this and we want to, we want to be reasonable. But, you know, they're cutting their own, I mean, cutting, cutting their own, you know, the, you know, line item like that, you know, in, in, you know, we're only a quarter into the fiscal year. I mean, I, I don't know. I, I, I think we've got to do better on, on budgeting and we've got to do better on compromising a little bit going forward. So I, I, I mean, they know, I think the department has know how much we are tired of getting hammered with overtime. So let's hope that when the new budgets come along, whomever the new mayor is going to be, that they can really think hard on that. Thank you.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, I just want to mention, I was going to get my budget book out, that, um, you know, we did cut, the mayor cut from four hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand. I think the council cut another hundred and fifty thousand. So they were down to two fifty, which, you know, I think is, for the whole year is reasonable. But, um, in summertime, they do work, uh, you know, sometimes it's, it's overtime. Sometimes there's a lot of activity during the summer months. Um, but just to go look at fiscal twenty, uh, it was, they expended one point two million in overtime. So, I mean, I think they're doing a decent job. Um, I had some questions about the overtime. We did cut the court overtime. Um, there was no court. Um, we went from one thirty-five down, we cut thirty-five thousand, so they still had a hundred thousand. And I see how they're using that. And he did state, um, if my colleagues on the finance committee remember that, uh, you know, courts are starting to get busy again. We don't know how it's going to go now with COVID again, of course. But they do have to have some money in there for, for the offices to show up if they, if they do, it could change, you know, weekly. So, um, but I, I think he's trying to do his best and I, I think he's learning that it is difficult to run a police department and financially, especially when, you know, you have people injured on duty and people that are, uh, out sick to try to, try to cover the, and protect the city.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just, and I'll gladly, uh, try to have a public safety meeting on the auxiliary. It, it, this police reform has really, um, for lack of a better way to describe it, probably put auxiliary police in, in serious jeopardy. There, there's gonna, there's different titles and different ways of, of potentially doing this, but the auxiliary police as we knew it all these years is no longer authorized within that police reform bill. So I know they are asking and trying to get reform of that reform, but it has not happened yet. And the other way in terms of overtime, obviously, we have openings in a variety, in patrolmen, the reserves. So obviously, if we could get to full capacity, we would potentially reduce the need for overtime. But right now, we, we aren't there. Uh, and so, uh, and this counselor, Tomlin, says summer is, is the most significant requirement for overtime. So, I mean, he, I, I do think he, in his first time around, I think he's done a pretty good job trying to manage that.
Anyone further? Seeing none. Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk will call it off. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgles?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Abstain.
LaBrow Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Twelve.
You, you approve that one. Twenty-nine J. Is the fiscal twenty-two state plan for the library services and technology. Uh, fifty thousand dollar grant, no match. Recommended that be adopted. Motion to be receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we had Maria Pagan before the committee. Uh, Maria did a good job of explaining to us, this is a fifty thousand dollar grant coming from the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissions that is actually part of state, um, ARPA fundings that came through the federal government and their, their way of putting it back into the, sharing the revenue, putting it back in to the community. Uh, Maria gave us a couple fantastic ideas that the library is looking to spend this money on. Uh, number one, and I did not have to call up my daughters to understand this, but it's to create a Wi-Fi hotspot for the, uh, for the, for the library itself. Um, we used Wi-Fi hotspots last April when we had to work remote because at that time, the courts were completely closed. And we had to have a very safe, uh, secure Wi-Fi hotspot to work at home for a month. Um, she also proposes to hire a social worker. She tells us that that will not be a new position in the budget. They have put the language careful, um, so that this person will be hired and paid through the grant. She anticipates, uh, this to be a, a five-year, um, money coming from, five-year as, as most ARPA money is, is coming from the state itself. So the, after the committee goes in and asks some questions of our, our, one of our longest-serving department heads, we, uh, agreed that the city should give the library permission to accept the grant and to spend it.
Anyone further? Seeing none. Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk will call it off. If you vote yes, you're voting for this grant.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgles?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LaBrow Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi? Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Ananamous.
With your vote, you approve that grant. Twenty-nine K. The Committee on Finance has referred in order that our city ensure the, uh, to provide all Everbridge announcements to our constituents in both English and Spanish in an effort to improve access to essential services. Um, recommended that be adopted, or I recommend it's been complied with. Our discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had our emergency manag, emergency management director Jeffrey Taraska before us, along with Mike McManus, to, to address this issue. The counselor who filed the order was Counselor Hernandez. And, uh, I think they did a great job of answering Counselor Hernandez's request. Um, what they, what they're telling us is that these Everbridge announcements that so many of us hear that go out over, um, over the system during emergencies and during, and notifying people about parking bans and snow removal and things that are going on, and sometimes even, you know, more, uh, more serious emergencies. Um, you know, our, what they're trying to do is do more pre-recorded messages in both languages to be helpful and to be sure that they are correctly, um, translated in terms of, uh, the word, the wording itself. And of course, interpretation is, is provided for. Uh, they're, they, they feel comfortable that this would alleviate some of the problems where a couple times last year, the language went out in English only. And, uh, at this point, we feel that with the answers we received, uh, to the, to the request of the maker of the order, that this order's been complied with.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just, uh, again, I want to mention, we have, we are working with translucency to, uh, and they are going to submit a proposal to do all of the translations. So whether it be on Everbridge or be on our website or be on mailings that we send out, that they would, they're going to submit a proposal. And they've been working with our assistant, Jeffrey Anderson Burgos, in terms of the kind of things that are out there and looking at what their interpretation cost might be for that. So they're going to submit a proposal so that all of our materials, both emergency and just on the website and other places, would be in both English and Spanish. Uh, I hope to have that before the council in the next two weeks.
Anyone further? Anyone online? Seeing none. Motion that's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There was no public safety. Off to public service. Thirty-one A. Committee on Public Service was referred in order. Letter appointing, uh, Ms. Gazallo of Seventy-Nine Law Street to serve as a member of the Conservation Commission. Uh, will, will be replacing, uh, Mr. Price Armstrong to serve the remainder of his term, which will expire February one, twenty-twenty-two.
Make a motion to accept.
Motion is to accept and approve the appointment. Under discussion, Counselor Leahy.
We had an excellent meeting last night, um, a lot of participation, and I really appreciate that. Um, uh, Ms. Grisille came down. She has an interesting background. Grandparents immigrated from, um, um, from Canada down, um, to Chesterfield. Um, parent, her parent, I think her mother was one of thirteen kids and they grew up on a farm. Um, she knows a lot about farming. She's lived here in Hoyoke for some time, Lawler Street. Uh, she now works for the, um, American Farm Land Trust. Um, she's going to use her experience on the Conservation Commission. I'm sorry, she's going to use her experiences, uh, from the American Land Trust on the Conservation Commission. When it comes to policies and procedures, um, she also knows that, you know, the farms that she works with are, are businesses. And, um, there's a healthy relationship between businesses and conservation, conservation lawn, or land, rather. Um, uh, she has her master's in environmental studies. Uh, I think she's going to be a good fit. And, um, I'm in favor.
Counselor Graney?
Yeah, just to, uh, reiterate with, uh, Counselor Lisi, and one of the best interviews that I've ever seen of any candidate that's ever come before this council. She's really a, a great candidate and answered the questions, uh, very succinctly and, and with, with, uh, with a great deal of intelligence. Thank you.
Anyone online? Just quickly to Counselor Hernandez. Counselor Lisi, sign your name to the, the jacket. Oh, Counselor Lisi, your hand's up.
Uh, yes, please. Um, go ahead and sign my name. Thank you so much. Um, I just want to also make a few comments in support of Ms. Gazallo's appointment. Um, she has a lot of experience and education and training in the field of, um, sustainable development. And I think that, um, she's going to, um, she has a good sense of the, um, grant landscape. And so she could help us find additional funding for Hoyoke to develop, um, management plans for a number of different resources in our city. So, um, very excited to support this appointment.
Anyone further? So motion is to confirm the appointment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, uh, item number thirty-one B. Um, this was already acted upon. Um, this doesn't need to be here. So I'm not sure if we give it leave to withdraw because it's already done or...
Thirty-one B, because I, I think we did take it up at the time.
Yes, we did.
Approved.
We have, yes.
So thirty-one B, give leave to withdraw?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Because it's already done, so it's just, I guess, a typo.
Okay. And, Mr. President, thirty-one C and thirty-one D. Um, I was told by legal yesterday, uh, to keep these on the table. So that's what we did last night, um, because it's still being researched by Attorney Ball.
All right. So we're, then we do have thirty-one E.
Thirty-one E.
Committee on Public Safety, uh, Public Service to whom was referred in order that the public, uh, service committee interview for the position of tax collector. Um, Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so last night, we interviewed, uh, potential candidates, or candidates that want to be the tax collector. We went, we, I was supposed to, we don't have to bid. Uh, we put this out there, uh, back in, um, September. And, um, we got a lot of applicants, a lot of people wanting to. Um, our new, um, personnel director, human resources, Sheila, uh, she did a fantastic job. She, uh, emailed us all the resumes and the CVs and cover letters and that sort of thing. So it, we ended up last night with some, uh, some pretty good candidates. We had, um, we had five people to interview. Only, uh, four people got interviewed. One of them decided not to get interviewed. Um, but, uh, we have a good slate of people here. So I make a motion to go to the first reading.
So go to...
First ballot?
First ballot. Yep. Any, anyone further before we go there? Uh, just once again, sorry. Counselor Lisi, Counselor Hernandez, just sign your name to the jacket for thirty-one E.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Uh, Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. I would just like to note that although I wasn't able to attend in person or on Zoom last night, I was able to see the interviews on the streaming. So that was very good.
Mr. President, uh, Counselor Bacon and I spoke earlier. She made an excellent point, uh, because, uh, the public service, uh, ran after the DG and R. It's not titled, "Public Service." So Counselor Bacon, that's a good find. Thank you for bringing that up.
Well, they later did title it.
Oh.
But early, early, when I was looking at it, it wasn't.
Nonetheless, good pickup.
Connected, yeah, yeah. Sorry for any confusion on that.
Oh, yeah. I'm glad you brought that up.
All right. So we'll go to a first ballot. Um, just as a reminder, for those who are at home, state the name of your candidate. Uh, the clerk will take the roll. The person who gets seven votes will be the new tax collector. If there's no seven votes on the first, we'll go to a second, third, and so on and so forth. So with that, the clerk will call the roll. Uh, state the name of your person.
Anderson Burgles?
Lauren Wilson.
Bartley?
Everyone else?
Graney? Hernandez?
Laura Wilson.
Leahy? LaBrow Martinez?
Lauren Wilson.
Lisi?
Jeffrey DeStrum.
McGee?
Laura Wilson.
McGivern?
Laura Wilson.
Murphy?
Debbie Brunel.
Sullivan?
Deborah Brunel.
Tomlin?
Laura Wilson.
Bacon?
Laura Wilson.
Eight Wilson?
Nine.
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 Nine, sorry.
Nine votes for...
Yes, nine.
With that vote, Laura Wilson receives the required votes for a tax collector.
Congratulations, Laura.
Congratulations and thank you to the committee and all the members here, all the work that you did. Greatly appreciated. We're on to, uh, DG, uh, no DG and R, or, yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Hold on, I gotta... Here we go. Wrong page. Onto DG and R. Thirty-two A. Committee on DG and R, relations to whom was referred, uh, special permit for one thirty-nine here on Ave. Uh, recommended that the order be adopted. So driveway in the front yard at one thirty-nine here on... Yep, no problem.
Okay, uh, motion to, uh, receive the committee's report, adopt the recommendation and grant the special permit, please.
Second.
Motion is to receive and adopt. Under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, we had a great meeting with the, uh, with the, um, petitioners, uh, what they're, what they're, and we had, it was a public hearing. We didn't have any feedback from, from really, from really any, any neighbors, any departments. What they're doing is, is basically mirroring what's happening with the property behind them. They're, they're putting in a, a driveway off of Downing, which is similar to what the property behind them on Ontario has. Uh, they're putting a, a side driveway. They're, they're going to maintain it and, um, you know, because our, our ordinances say what they do about, you know, driveways in the front yard requiring a special permit. Um, the, the petitioners came here, Meg and Gary, and, um, um, so we were, we were grateful that they, they were, uh, able to, to come to City Hall and, uh, and I think for one of them anyhow, it was like their first time. So there was a kind of a monumental trip for them, which was cool. And so they, um, they were grateful for, uh, I don't think we had any conditions on it whatsoever, uh, that I recall. So, uh, and the committee, uh, unanimously supported the, um, the petition. Thank you.
Anyone further? This motion is to receive, adopt, grant the special permit. The clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the permit.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgles?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LaBrow Martinez? Lisi?
Yes.
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 McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Ananamous.
With your vote, you approve that one. Thirty-two B. Committee on DG and R, who was referred in order a special permit, uh, application for homography for a salon at three fifty-one Jarvis Ave. Uh, recommend that be adopted with the following conditions, that the hours of operation be Wednesday, ten AM to five PM, Friday, twelve PM to nine PM, Saturday, nine AM to four PM, Sunday, ten AM to five PM. There will be allowed one client at a time and up to one additional person waiting, that there be no deliveries or signs allowed.
Yeah, motion receive, uh, the committee report, uh, adopt the recommendation and grant the special permit.
All right. So motion to receive, adopt. Under discussion, Counselor...
Yeah, another, another really good discussion by a person that wants to have a home-based business. The, the hours... The, the hours that we put in the conditions were the ones that she suggested in her petition. The other conditions were about no delivery, no sign. She was good to go with that. The only thing we added was the, and she was okay with it, with one client at a time and one person. There's a little bit, you know, the, the parking situation is up, up there is, is a little bit tight. We asked her, since this is Ward Seven, we asked her to reach out to you, Todd, because some of the parking restrictions there seem a little bit over the top, on the one hand, and then some of the parking restrictions in place are routinely ignored. So, there's questions about that. We, we did, we did get some, some really good, one of the butters gave some really good feedback, and so, nothing negative, but they were concerned about, like they always are, traffic, parking, and I, I think we had, we had addressed those in the committee meeting. The, the, the person from the public hearing also is concerned about litter, and that is just a regular occurrence everywhere in the city. Litter does nothing but belittle all of us. I walk around, pick it up myself. I, I cannot believe what, what people do, but they do it. And, and, and so, we, we just have, it's a constant battle, and we'll just have to, well, I just have to keep fighting it. But, this particular petitioner really is conscientious. She's a homeowner. She's been in this business for 20 years, so we're, we're, we were definitely unanimously in support of her petition. Thank you.
Anyone further? Any none? Motion is to receive, adopt, and approve the special permit. The clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit.
Tomlin.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Anderson Burgles.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Graney.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Leahy.
Yes, yes.
Lebron Martinez.
Yes.
Lisi.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Your vote, you approve that one. 32C, Committee on DGNR, who was referred a special permit for auto sales center, 1607 North Hampton Street, to expand the current licensed car lot. Recommend that be adopted with the following conditions. That the hours of operations be the same as the current business, Monday to Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Motion is to receive and grant the permit, under discussion, Counselor...
Yeah, motions to receive the committee report, adopt the recommendation, and grant the permit.
Under discussion?
Yeah, this is, I think, most of us who reside here are very familiar with this business, very familiar with the, with the owner of the business. And what the owner has done is purchase a couple of additional lots to the south, and the, the lots go from essentially auto sales center to Cray Avenue. And so, he already owns a, a home there. There's another home, and then the former Cray's Package Store. And, and we, we had a good discussion about what it is that they, they, they want to do, and, and right now, he's, he wants, and, and the other, the, the specialty store, I'm blanking the name right this second, but he, he definitely wants to preserve the, the store on, on North Hampton Street. He's got a house there that he, that he leases. There's another house in the back on Cray that, that he, I think he plans to rehab and lease that one. And the former Cray's Package, not really sure. It's got some structural issues and faulty roof, et cetera, et cetera. So, but he paid a pretty penny to acquire the properties, and essentially, he wants to expand his operation across the properties. And I think anybody that knows Ira and knows that business knows that it's a, it's a real, that they are a real credit to, to the city. And the committee voted unanimously to support it with the, with the conditions. And the conditions were, you know, basically what, you know, his, the, the current hours. And, and so, there was nothing else to add. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. I, I'm, I wasn't at this meeting. If I was, I would speak in favor of Ira and his business. There's many business people you meet over the years, but there's not many business people that you can just look in the eye and say, "This guy is pure class. He's a pure gentleman." And Ira is definitely that type of person and is that person. If you remember what his lot looked like before he had it, he certainly brings a white glove approach to cleaning this, to perfection. He is, he's just a pure gentleman, and I think that this is going to be a good thing for that, for that side lots down toward the south, especially the Cray building, which is kind of dilapidated. So, this is going to be a great thing for the neighborhood, and congratulations to Ira. Thank you.
Counselor Graney?
Yeah, just quickly, the, the business aforementioned is called, was called The Cottage. And to make a long story short, this gentleman has been in business for a long time in Hoyoke, has made a substantial investment in the community, is a proud Hoyoke High School graduate, and I supported this initiative enthusiastically.
Counselor Tomlin?
Everybody said everything I wanted to say, so I can't say too much. But David did a great job explaining everything, and Jim, I'll be brief.
Mr. Murray.
No, they, my biggest question was concerning about the, how many more cars they have in their vehicles, and they said about 10 on that lot. And Counselor Bartley stayed, asked him about the buildings, and hopefully, he'll, you know, try to keep the buildings intact and maybe renovate one or two of them. I think it's a, definitely an excellent investment from a, a good business person in Hoyoke.
All right. Counselor McGivern, then Counselor Bartley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, just to echo some of the words and maybe add a couple. Ira originally opened up his business back in 1991, 1992. Everything he promised to do then, he has held true throughout the years. He has protected the residential part of, of the neighborhood, and he has protected a historical number of, of buildings that he now owns. And, and when you look at the, the building that he occupied, he's, he's made some expansions to it, but it's the former Peter Pan bus station. When you look at The Cottage, you know, that's part of history, just the architecture of The Cottage, which also was the Highland Rose, Counselor Graney, I think, at one point. But a number of different businesses have taken there.
That was before my time.
You know, Cray Package Store is, is, may or may not be able to be brought back, but he's certainly going to give it a shot. The roof is not in too good shape. There's a, there's a couple of houses on the property he now owns and, and some land. The, the street itself is not an accepted city way, but I think he may have some plans with that. But throughout the neighborhood, throughout the businesses and the residential neighborhood, he's lived up to his promise, and I, I just commend the committee for this recommendation and look forward to, to Mr. Elfman continuing business with these historical pieces of, of property. We did, he did lose one property, though, which is sad, and that was, the barber shop was actually the original Next Nest, and a car crash threw that a few years ago, and unfortunately, the insurance company would not pay to restore it.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, Counselor McGivern is right on the, on the history on that. That was a kind of a shocking accident. It was like a, so, it was like it was a Saturday afternoon, and somebody just drove right to the building. So, how that happened, I don't know. But the, I would be remiss, there was one butter that did reach out kind of after the fact, and that's the restaurant that's just, the world famous restaurant that's just to the north of it, and they were all in, in full-on support. I guess they submitted their comments online, and they, you know, somehow it just didn't get transferred to the committee jacket. But I, I wanted, I, I told the owner I would mention on the microphone, so there you go.
All right. I, I have it right here. I, I did receive an, the email as well as a follow-up. Dear Chairman Bartley and fellow committee members, we are writing our support for Ira Elfman's request for a special permit to extend his car lot at his business auto sales center, 1607 North Hampton Street. My husband and I own Next Nest, which is right across from the auto center. We have been in business, or neighbors, with Ira for 16 years. He has been a great neighbor. We, he keeps his property in excellent condition. It's wonderful to see that the business in Hoyoke is looking to expand. We hope that this committee and the council will see this as a positive for the city in Ward Six. We thank you for your time. Kevin and Jennifer Shatinoff, owners of Next Nest. So, they did reach out. It went through public comment. And, you know, there always are kinks when we're dealing with the stuff, but I said I would read it for them, and I thanked them for reaching out to us and letting us know their, their support for the business, which everyone has said they, I think everyone is wanting to say is, it's just a great owner of a business, and, and he's doing a phenomenal thing in Hoyoke, so we, we wish him well. With that, motion is to receive, adopt, and grant the special permit. The clerk will call the roll. Vote yes, you're voting for this.
Tomlin.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Anderson Burgles.
Yep.
Bartley.
Yes.
Graney.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Leahy.
Yes, excuse me, yes.
Lebron Martinez. Lebron Martinez.
Yes, yes, I'm very sorry, yes.
Lisi.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Your vote, you approve that one. 32D, the Committee on DGNR, who was referred an order that the Hoyoke CPA Annual Budget Article 2022, request that the City Council to vote to appropriate the reserve of the Community Preservation Funds and Annual Revenues, recommend that be adopted.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report.
Motion is to receive and adopt, under discussion?
Yeah, this, we, we did get this filed on September 7th in, in City Council, and we, we understand we had a time element on this. So, this is kind of a pro forma thing, showing the C, Community Preservation Funds, annual revenues, its, its appropriations, its budget, how it's carved out between admin, historic, community housing, open space, that sort of thing, and the reserve. So, we, we had, we had a brief presentation by our liaison, Counselor Sullivan, who I appreciate his, again, his, he's a liaison for that, and he's a liaison for CPC as well. So, so it's, it's, you know, unless, Mike, you want to add something else? I, I don't know. It was, it was unanimous that the, the form and the, and the numbers looked good. So, the total budget, so the public is aware. Your tax dollars, by the way, your property tax dollars, $729,872. So, that's where that lies. So, we, we voted to receive it and, and approve it. Thank you.
All right. So, motion is to receive and approve. The clerk will call the roll. Vote yes, you're voting for the update, as Counselor Bartley has given, on the total.
Tomlin.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Anderson Burgles.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Graney.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Leahy. Lebron Martinez.
Yes.
Lisi.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Your vote, you approve. 32E, the Committee on DGNR, who was referred an order, license agreement between the city of Hoyoke and Edward A. Owen, recommend that be adopted.
Now, I, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion at this point that we suspend and allow Attorney Deggan to address us on this matter, because I understand that that's what is an order at this point.
Second.
The motion is to suspend the rules to allow the attorney to answer questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Turn it over to the legal department.
Yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As Counselor Bartley has said, that the DGNR reviewed a license agreement between Mr. Owen and the city, and it was voted to approve. The issue was Mr. Owen. He spoke, and his big concern with the license agreement is the provision lettered F, whereby the city has the right to rescind the license. He had issues with the rescind, rescission itself and any rescission for an emergency, which I think Counselor Bartley said very well, that you can't really define what an emergency is. So, at the meeting, I did agree to meet with Mr. Owen. I did meet with Mr. Owen, and I'm currently working on some language, paragraph F, not taking it out, but simply softening the language, keeping the emergency language in there, but softening the language as to the city's rescission of the agreement for any other reason. I think he was concerned that, you know, it would just be rescinded. So, I am working on that. I have not completed it, and that's why you do not, I'm not sure if you have a copy of it or not.
I do.
But I'm working to try to satisfy Mr. Owen's concerns and keep the license agreement. You know, it's favorable to the city. So, right now, I'm, I'm working on it, is what I'm doing. So, I plan to have it finished for the next council meeting, but I can answer questions that you might have.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I, I don't have any questions. I, I think, I'm going to make a motion that we table this in a second, but I, I think that, I think it would be helpful for the law department to file a communication on just the section of this that's going to be revised. So, and, so it could just be sent as a communication. So, if we lay this on the table, when the council, especially the committee, gets a chance to review it, so we're not going, we already reviewed the whole agreement, and the agreement's one, two, three, you know, it's three pages, so it's not like it's, you know, war and peace. So, but, yeah, it's three pages, and so if we don't have to review the whole thing again, if we're just reviewing paragraph F under the scope, section one, then, then that would be a communication that we could just maybe tackle all at once, Mr. President, right? So, we can pull that out of communications, take, take the other one off the table, and just, just amend it right there on the floor. So, okay? Does that make sense, Attorney Deggan?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much, Counselor Bartley. I appreciate it.
So, I'll make a motion, unless anybody wants to speak on this, I don't think so. I'll make a motion that we table.
Second.
A motion is to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and then we'll get the update.
Mr. President, if I could just have, I was voting yea in the last one. I just step out for a minute. Thank you. Thank you, Peter.
So, 32F, Committee on DGNR, who was referred that the council approve a resolution for certified housing development, and...
We suspend the rules until 32F and G. Is that all right, David?
F and G together.
Bacon.
Okay. And G would be council approve resolutions for a certified project of tax, of tax TIF, same area. So, motion to suspend rules, take up F and G as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
It says waiting disposition, so Counselor Bartley?
Yes, the, the motion is to receive the committee report, adopt the committee report, and to approve the TIE and the TIF.
Motion is to receive and approve, under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Yes, 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 yes. So, we took this up and kind of a, kind of a, moved this along at the request behest of the OPED Director and the mayor, acting mayor. So, being team players that we are...
She done it? Got to turn off your microphone.
So, so we, so we went ahead and I met twice in the last week. And so, last night, we met, and it was a very good meeting, a very productive meeting. So, this is, I think, a kind of an exciting project for the, for the Race Street area. I mean, I don't know how detailed you want to get, probably not terribly detailed, but essentially, what's happening is, is a copycat of what we approved at the Hotel Jess for Mr. Whitman last spring. If you recall, he's doing a combination residential and commercial on, at the Hotel Jess, which is on, on Main Street near the train station. This is a similar situation where it's going to be leveraging, by us granting this, if we do grant it, the city would not get 100% tax until about five years for one, six years for the other, on the incremental value above the current assessment. Well, what the hell does that mean? Well, right now, it's, it's an empty lot, so there isn't a whole lot of tax revenue being collected. So, as time marches on, there'll be more value, and that value's going to get an additional assessment, and that additional assessment is, is not going to be taxed. So, it's 100% for eight-year one, 80, 60, 20, and so it's a sliding scale on these two things, on the increased assessment. What does the city of Hoyoke get in return? Well, it looks like, well, these are two veteran developers who redid the Cubit, and they turned then something into what was a, you know, total eyesore for decades into, now it's got HCCs culinary, it's got loft apartments per the petitioner's last night. They got a waiting list that goes, you know, forever, and nobody wants to leave, and everybody likes living there. So, how about that? People like living in downtown Hoyoke. People like living in downtown Holyoke, pretty cool. And then, this is gonna be very interesting, Mr. President, so this is gonna be brand-new construction, three stories, let's see, no, sorry, four floors, sorry about that, four stories, although, yeah, you would think I could read a map, so four stories, and then we're looking at, oh, boy, where is it, we're looking at a tax benefit to the city that's gonna be kind of vital, but we're, as far as the development goes, we've got forty-five market rate apartments, and by market rate, they're, you know, looking at, and one and two-bedroom deals, they're looking at eleven hundred, fifteen hundred bucks a month, under current rates, and so according to the petitioners, they, as soon as they have a vacancy in the current ones, they get a vacancy in this one, but, good for them, you know, we want them to succeed. As far as the city goes, according to their projections, we're gonna see some pretty significant increase in taxes, right now, it's peanuts, because it's a vacant lot, it's under a couple thousand bucks a year, and then when this is done, we're talking probably somewhere around a hundred forty thousand bucks after the tip and the T I E, so it's a good, it's a good thing for the city, I know the acting mayor's behind it, O P E D's behind it, and we in committee, we supported Hotel Jess, this body supported Hotel Jess, this is a similar type situation. The only thing I'm gonna add, Mr. President, is that we had something on a tax break, if you will, for a commercial property, to this day, I can't believe I voted for that, because this property owner has not paid a nickel in city tax, this is like year thirteen, so they had a ten-year break originally, and then we gave them another ten-year break, and they came in threatening to leave, we're gonna leave, you know, what position were we to say, other than, yes, we'll help you, but I said to Mr. Marrero at the time, that's the last time I'll vote for that, and we haven't went back since, this is a lot different, this is on the incremental value over the current assessment, as opposed to like zero, donut, you know, and the guy there with a smile, sitting right there with a smile on his face, we're gonna leave, okay, so I swallowed my pride and I voted for it, but I said, never again, and we haven't had it presented, so we appreciate the work that Mr. Vega did, Mr. Diject did, that the mayor did, and the rest of the crew up in O P E D, and so this looks like a potential winner, start date, they said next March, takes about two years, and so we'll see what happens, but it could be a pretty exciting development for that area, thank you.
Councillor Grady?
And just quickly, too, the gentleman said that these lots were in disrepair, there's a lot of different type of rubbish that spilled around there, and he vowed that he was gonna keep them clean, keep them clean, until the construction starts, so that's also a benefit to the city.
Anyone for councillor McGivern?
I'd just like to speak in favor of both orders, the increment financing and the agreements that we, I hope, are about to adopt, allow these developers to get their financing, to do the work they do, and councillor Bartley couldn't have said it better, the Cubit is a fine example, I went to a couple of events next door at the Armored Yard, I believe they call it, and I met a couple of the tenants of the Cubits, and one of them, she was actually walking over the canal walk, over the bridge that walks you right over the canal itself, coming from dinner at the Avalon Lounge Cafe, which is one of our newer restaurants up on Dwight Street, and it's just fantastic, Gateway, V-Tech's got the music going again, my daughter went, my youngest daughter went to a concert, there were over five hundred people at Gateway a couple of weekends ago, and it's just incredible what's happening in this area, and I think, you know, even though we give up a little bit of taxes in the beginning, exactly how councillor Bartley said it, we get it back in the long run, and zero is zero right now.
Anyone further?
Todd?
Councillor Tomlin?
Yeah, it's definitely, can be a great improvement to that area and help to that area, I actually had a chance last Saturday to go down to the Great American Brick Race, which is amazing, I've never been, it's like the tenth year, and I've never been to it, and got a chance to be at the farmer's market to pick up some local produce from area farmers, but this family, these brothers are really putting a lot of investment into the city, is really a beneficial thing happening for the city in that area especially.
Anyone further? Councillor Bartley?
I'll just add a couple of small points, one, the brothers live in Holyoke, so I think we should note that, and this is gonna leverage, they said, about one point five million, which is gonna add, which what really is gonna happen, is gonna attract investors, so they're looking at, I forgot what the number is Pete, but it's like thirteen, the whole deal's like thirteen point three million, or, I don't know where it is, but it's in here somewhere, so, so it's a pretty significant investment, and so they're looking at kind of essential tax credits, you know, if you go back to what councillor Leahy said earlier about Westeriahurst, I mean, for heaven's sakes, these guys ought to go give them a, like, a lesson in leveraging financing, because apparently they can do it, so, this is kind of an exciting, exciting project for that area, and I think we should support it, thank you.
Councillor Leahy?
One last thing, Gateway opens tomorrow, they have a music performance, six o'clock to eight o'clock, then they have another performance at eight o'clock, and suggest if you're around, try to go down there for a beer or soda.
All right, so motion is to receive and adopt, that's F and G, the clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for both.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgles?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Um, excuse me, LeBron Martinez, he had to leave family situation, thank you.
Thank you.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Twelve years.
Your vote approved both of those, I was told to give another update, he's causing trouble up here, it's the fifth inning, it's now three-nothing, all right, we're gonna move on.
Go Red Sox.
How many strikes?
Ouch!
That's a tough one, thirty-two H, all right, command DGNR was referred at the Hoyoke City Council in accordance master of the law, procurement of twelve twenty-two twenty-four Main Street for thirty-one thousand nine hundred, assessed value twenty thousand six hundred, waiting disposition.
Yeah, again, we met last night, so I'll make a motion to receive the committee report, adopt the committee report, and approve the conveyance.
Motion is to receive and adopt, approve the conveyance, under discussion councillor Bartley.
Okay, yeah, okay, so this, this is thirty-two H, right, I'm in the wrong.
Yeah, thirty-two H.
Hold on a second, I'm in the wrong one. Yeah, okay, thank you, Mr. President, all right, well, this is, this is, this one's gonna, I'm just gonna give the reader digest version on this, so, so this is property in the vicinity of Mosher and Maine and Race, where that little, that little neck sticks out there on your way, on your way over from South Hadley, and these are three vacant lots, and what's happening is the petitioner was before us last night, and they have many miles before they sleep, but in this, in this case, there's three lots, it's kind of proximate to the, to the train, to the former train station that, actually, it's Mr., I think it's Mr. White from South Hadley now owns that, he purchased that from H and H a few years ago, so, the lots are vacant for a while, they're in, you know, they're sorely in need of somebody to take real ownership of it, the city certainly took a bath as far as demo and taxes and all the rest of that, there's no question, but, in this case, we have, we have a company called H and H Realty, and they already own a building just to the south of it, wherein they're going to, because it's on the I G, so they're gonna have a marijuana component, I believe that that is, that permit is still before ordinance, they're also involved with some other ancillary ordinance questions as well, in this case, our committee just really looked at the conveyance of the, of the three lots, it was RFP, this was the highest and best use, according to O P E D, I'm just gonna try to look at my notes on this one, Mr. President, so the petitioner's out of Springfield, his lawyer's out of Boston, essentially what they, the long-term plan is to put down some, I mean, I think he said, two or three, for lack of a better term, greenhouses, but he made them sound like they're more than a greenhouse, he made it sound like these are eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars specialty structures that come in prefabbed and get planted on the lots, so whatever it is, it's gonna be value, I think I was impressed by the, by the petitioner in the sense of his, you know, without even being asked, he kind of sensed, he just kind of said, hey, I wanna clean up the lots, I wanna clean up all the needles that are all over the place there, of which there are many, and, and I mean, he didn't enumerate, but it sounded like a lot, and he wants to get involved with the community, and it sounded like, you know, he sounded like a noble person, and so, that being said, there really isn't anything else happening, if his permits come together, I mean, I think we tried to put a timeline on it, but we couldn't pin him down, but it doesn't sound like he was gonna say anything for a year or two at best, but at least, at least it'll take ownership, and he made it sound like he wants to get in there, once he takes ownership, get in there and start cleaning it up, so, proof will be in the pudding, and we'll hopefully that the Ward One councillor, or whomever that will be, will stay on top of that and give us some feedback, and we'll watch what happens over the next couple of years, thank you.
Councillor Grady?
I just want to correct my last statement on the previous order, this was the order that I meant about the gentleman that was gonna clean up the lots and keep it clean, that's all, I just, I was ahead of myself.
You always are, Howie, you're always, you're always like ahead of the curve.
Thank you.
Councillor Tomlin?
Yeah, definitely, a great investment to the city, the gentleman and his attorney really explained everything what they want to do, and of course, David, you know that also in these, if it doesn't get done, the work in a certain period of time, we have the reverter clauses in those, which is, which is good for the city to have, we had that issue up in Pleasant and Hampton Street for a number of years, and it just kept on going, ten years before they actually developed something up there or longer, so it's a good thing that the city has in there, but to clean up that area, to put something there, and to really make that viable, and when he stated the greenhouses, the steel structure, it sounded typical greenhouse that we see, said it was about eight hundred thousand dollars per greenhouse, which was, which, that's an investment in itself, so, and I think he did say two or three of those there, so, it's definitely a big investment, and in the millions of dollars, he said, I don't know exactly the total, but he did say, you know, a few million dollars that they're investing in that area of Main Street, so it's a, it's a big benefit to the city of Holyoke.
See, no, and further motion is to receive and adopt, the clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the sale.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgles?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Your vote approved that one, thirty-two I, committee on DGNR for four fifteen, four seventeen Main Street for ten thousand dollars, for mixed-use building, approximately twenty-seven hundred square feet, recommend, I don't know, fair market value is one thirty-five four hundred, awaiting disposition.
Thank you, Mr. President, the motion is to receive the committee report, adopt the committee report, and approve the conveyance to the petitioner.
Motion is to receive, adopt, grant the conveyance, under discussion councillor Bartley.
Yeah, this, this is one where, I wish we could put up on a screen, the photograph of the building, for people that don't travel on Main Street that often, people are watching us at home, and, and, but I think anyone at home would realize, a building with a big old X on it is something that the fire department says, we're not going in, and that's what this building has, is a big old X next door, so that one's gonna get demolished, and the one next to it is what they're, what they're hoping to do, is to move their business from College Highway in Westfield to Main Street, and, and so have their business be located on Main Street, and then rehab the top two floors and use those for residential units, which, which is just fantastic, so this is something, maybe won't get any headlines, but here's, here's a guy from Holyoke, he wants to come back to his hometown, he's been in this business thirty-plus years of fire restoration, he established his own business under his own name for the last two or three years in Westfield, I asked what's wrong with Westfield, he says, I just like Holyoke, and so, hey, we got friends in Westfield, and so we respect them, but he wants to come back to the city and take what is a real tremendous couple of eyesores, and have some parking, off-street parking, and then have a business, and have residential apartments, and then the business not only is to make money, but it's to train people to go in and start their own careers, so, in the fire restoration game, so, so it was, it was a real pleasure, again, the city, the city gets hammered, you know, lots of taxes and all the rest of it, the interesting part about this, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go into the details, because although it is a public record, you know, somebody can go get it from, it's also from the clerk, but essentially, he's got an angel investor, Mr. Patel from Springfield, now I know Mr. Patel, he's a tower square, he's a big wheeler dealer down there, does a lot of development, he owns a lot of businesses, a lot of hotels, he's investing in the city of Springfield in the millions, so here he is, coming with private funds, investing in a business, obviously he believes it, this guy is a professional, he obviously believes in it, he knows what's being purchased in Holyoke, he knows what that building looks like, and he's investing his own money, because I'll tell you, no bank would ever do it, no bank would ever do it, because of various reasons that we're not gonna talk about now, but such as, I won't talk about it, so, so essentially, essentially we had, we have a, I think a win on a lot of levels, and ultimately, once this gets back up and running, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a new business, new apartments, we're gonna have a viable tax-paying entity with a commercial slash residential rate, I mean, this is something I think we can all get behind, yeah, if you look at the building, you know, if you look at its paper, ten thousand dollars, what's that, well, if you look at the building, holy cow, that's like, I think the city did well to get ten thousand dollars, there were two bidders on this, one was a local business, O P E D said that they were just not ready to roll, and the party that they presented to us is ready to roll, and clearly that, they had the financial backing, the proofs and all the documents we have, so it looks like it's very viable, and we'll see what happens, thank you.
Anyone further? Councillor Grady, sorry.
Just quickly, this gentleman made a great presentation, and he said he was in the business of this business for twenty-seven years, so he knows the business, and he's had his own business, I think, for two or three years, so, yeah, it should be a welcome addition to Hoyoke, thank you.
Councillor Tomlin?
Yeah, the thing that really impressed me is that he's gonna be, you know, having people apprentice, teaching people how to, you know, with this fire restoration, a sprinkler system, teaching young students, maybe even students down from Dean, and to take this area that is really a tough area with buildings and X's on buildings, and to really put some money into that and really clean up that, that portion of Main Street, really is great to have, as councillor Bartley said, it's a win-win for the city of Holyoke.
Anyone further? See none, motion is to receive and adopt and grant the approval for the sale, clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for it.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgles?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lisi? McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven years.
Your vote approved that one, thirty-two J, command DGNR, who was referred that they invite in Lynn Gray, general manager of the Hoyoke Mall, to future DGNR meeting, recommend that it is complied with.
The motion is to receive and adopt the committee report.
Motion is to receive, adopt, under discussion councillor Bartley.
Yeah, one of the best parts of this committee is the G R part, that we just did the development right there, so now we're doing the government relations, and so Lynn's the new manager, comes for the Hoyoke Mall, are still our biggest tax-paying entity by a lot, and she replaces the legendary Boragowski, who called a day after nineteen years at the mall, so we tipped our collective hats to Bill, maybe one day we'll get him a proclamation from here, I think that's probably a worthwhile, worthwhile pursuit, she just comes up with a lot of experience in business, she's, I think, I think she's from Amherst, but we didn't really get into that, but she's been in this game for years, she's also worked for Pyramid for a number of years at the Hamp Mall, and she's working on, she's working on a lot of things, I mean, retail is a tough business right now, but they're, they're doing well, as she said, and they're engaging the community, and so, and they're forever, they're forever trying to look for, you know, not just national companies, but for local companies, and she said that the demand is there, and that mall is still going well, I mean, I'm up at that mall at least three times a week, and... up at that mall at least three times a week and getting my mail or walking around or doing whatever. And I'll tell you, it, it just still, it still looks great, in my opinion. I don't think it looks tired. I think it looks fantastic. And, and the, the mall does a great job of, uh, of presenting itself well, well to the public. So, and I see license plates from New Jersey, New York, Vermont, uh, I mean, New Hampshire, uh, every time I go there. So, clearly, somebody's shopping it there. And the word's out that the Hoyoke Mall's a, still a great place to be for, uh, for all sorts of entertainment and all the other things. So, Lynn, Lynn was, um, was, uh, it was great to have her here. Uh, we're, we're gonna, uh, do more of these things as, as time marches on for the next few months. We'll, we'll get, we'll get some more people in here, um, to talk about how, how they view Hoyoke. And it was a good chance for her to meet, not for, only for us to meet her, uh, the counselors over there, and the counselors that watched on TV. And, uh, but a good chance for her to meet us. And she, she really, really appreciated it. I, I think I hit all the, all the highlights there. Uh, I'll just say one thing on behalf of, uh, just myself. Uh, we had, uh, two meetings, uh, one very lengthy and the one last night, which would have been a lot longer, but we had to curtail it, and we had perfect attendance. So, we certainly want to thank all the committee members for, uh, every member of the committee actively engaged. So, we didn't have any potted plants, which is nice. Everybody actively engaged in, in all the meetings and had valuable comments on, on every single order. And there were a lot of them. So, thank you to the committee. And that's the report.
See no one further. Motion, uh, Counsel Tomlin.
Yeah, just real briefly, uh, it was a great meeting. And that's one of my favorite parts of being on this committee is, uh, the government relations, meeting people from throughout the city that, uh, really we can get to, get to know and to find out what we can do for them. Um, a couple of days after that meeting, I got a chance to go up to the mall. Um, they had a ribbon cutting at, uh, Route twenty-one, which is a big store, a clothing store for Generation Z people, if anybody knows who Generation Z is, fifteen to twenty-five-year-olds. So, um, it was, I got to meet Lynn again there and to talk to her. And, uh, hopefully, we'll meet, uh, with her and see what we can do, uh, you know, to have that good relation between the city and Hoyoke Mall, because they, uh, they do provide a lot of tax dollars. And we want to make sure that, uh, that the mall keeps on, uh, having those stores full up at the, up at the mall. Thank you.
You wish our Counsel Graney.
Yeah, what about Generation ZZ Top?
All right, so motion that's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Off to Charter and Rules, thirty-three A. The Committee on Charter and Rules was referred, uh, that Hoyoke amend its charter to provide city council confirmation of all new mayoral appointees to the Board of Public Works. Fire Commissioner furthered that the charter be amended to provide the city council confirmation of any current appointees. The time of recon- uh, confirmation, uh, recommend that the order be adopted as amended, striking out language, uh, that Hoyoke amend its charter to provide the city council confirmation, uh, pending legal review.
So, the motion would be to receive and adopt the committee report?
Motion to receive, adopt the committee report. Counsel Bacon.
Thank you. So, we had a good discussion on this, and we did have our acting city solicitor, Lisa Ball, with us, as well as Attorney Degman. And so, we reviewed a number of considerations under the order. And we also had Acting Mayor Murphy with us. And after good discussion and review of, I think, three different options, the committee made this recommendation that our president just read, that Hoyoke amend its charter to provide for city council confirmation of all new mayoral appointments. So, we kept it simple, to the point. And Mayor Murphy has indicated that he, should the body recommend this approval, that he will sign it and move it forward according to whatever legal procedure is required.
Anyone? Counsel McGivern, then Counsel Barley. It'd be the language as, as read. They're recommending that the order, uh, be amended to say that Hoyoke amend its charter to provide for city council confirmation of all new mayoral appoint, appointments.
It's.
So, they're changing it to read as that.
We have, I didn't see what happened. Do we have the language in front of us?
The language is, um, included on the agenda.
Yeah.
Verbatim, um, as the amended recommendation from the committee to the council and to go to the mayor. We don't have legal form because it's not an ordinance.
I don't understand. It's not an ordinance, but we do have, we do have the charter language in front of us. Um, might, if I could, uh, suspend the rules to allow legal?
Second.
Up, so motion is suspend the rules to allow legal. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. Mr. President, I'm sorry, before we continue, I can't hear what the other counselors are saying.
Yeah, we just, we just had the mic turned back on.
I, I apologize, Mr. President, to everybody. What, I, my mic was off.
Oh.
Um, everybody can hear me, though. That's, that's.
No, but no, we can't.
No, my question, my question was if we have the language for the charter change, which I'm very interested in. But my, the question I'd like to ask is, was to suspend the rules so I could ask the legal department, um, if I could. Attorney Degman is with us?
Yes.
My, my question, my question is in a charter change, are there certain charter changes that we can do with a two-thirds vote of the city council of the, of the entire body and the mayor's approval with the legislature and governor signing off? But there are certain things that we cannot do without, without going to a ballot question, which is the form of government. Is this considered part of the form of government that needs a ballot question? Or is it something that we can do without going to the voters?
Well, you're asking a question which is actually what the legal review is all about. I am in the process of doing that legal review and reducing my opinion to writing so that this body can see what exactly is required and under what circumstances. So, um, I'd like to be able to submit that written legal review to you for the next city council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will, I will make a motion to the table, Mr. President.
All right, so motion to the table?
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, we'll wait for the legal opinion.
Thank you.
Thirty-three B. The Committee on Charter and Rules was referred in order that the law department draft a home rule petition to be filed with the legislature to remove residency requirement for city solicitor from section forty-five of the Hoyoke City Charter. Uh, no person shall be eligible for any office the city governing except superintendent schools, so on and so forth. Um, we do have the language attached. I'll read that. I was asked to read that. Sorry.
I, if I may, just as a point of information, I think, um, Jeffrey did copy that language to everybody tonight?
Yeah, I think everyone's gotten their desk.
Oh, it should be on everybody's desk. Okay.
Yeah, it's, I'll just read it into the record, in case you lost it in the shuffle, like my pile up here. Uh, the city of Hoyoke, through the Honorable City Council and the Honorable Mayor, hereby petition the Massachusetts General Court to enact legislation amending the city charter. And that said legislation be entitled, "An Act to Amend the Charter of the City of Hoyoke." And that the said act shall read as followed. Section one, section forty-six of Char- uh, Charter four thirty-eight of the Acts of eighteen ninety-six is hereby amended by inserting the word schools with the following word of any city's, uh, any city, and city solicitor. Section two, uh, section forty-seven of said four thirty-eight of the Acts of nineteen ninety, uh, eighteen ninety-six is hereby amended by inserting after the word schools, the following words, and city solicitor. The act shall take effect on passage. Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the motion would be to receive and adopt the committee report and seek and, and submit the home rule petition?
Motion is receive and adopt. Under discussion.
So, the order had originally come in to amend section forty-five, and then it was discovered that while forty-five requires a residency in order for the person to assume the position, under Article forty-six, it also states that if the person lived in the city and then left the city, they would no longer be eligible to serve. So, to make the change complete, the order was amended to include section forty-six as well as forty-five, which is in the language before you tonight. So, in this situation, I think we're okay to move ahead. Our legal department had hoped to have both things for us tonight, but sometimes these things take longer than we think. So, thank you.
Anyone further? See none. Uh, clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for, uh, the charter change and send it off to Mass General Court.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Ananimos.
Make your vote. You approve that one. There was no joint school and city council, so off to motions, orders, and resolutions. Uh, thirty-five is from Counsel Anderson Burgos at the DPW. Work with Suez to clean out the drainage.
President?
Thirty-five.
Mr. President, sorry, can I, uh?
Forty-one.
Pick up, uh, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, well, yeah, thirty-five through forty-one as a package, please.
Well, I'm not gonna.
Sounds good.
Send to DPW? We're all going to DPW?
Yes, please. Thank you. Uh, send to, uh, DPW, please.
All right, so motion is suspend rules, take up thirty-five to forty-one. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-five is, uh, once again, uh, DPW, Suez, clean out the drainage near, um, northwest corner of the field area of Community Field. Thirty-six is to repair the track area near the drainage at Community Field. Thirty-seven is DPW cut back the weeds near Community Field's drainage. Uh, thirty-eight, DPW relocate and replace the no discharge sign located at the west side corner of B Street and Linden Street. Thirty-nine, DPW place a caution, drive slowly, um, for children at play by twenty to twenty-two Sydney Ave. Forty, the DPW find a new location for the old Community Field plaque. Forty-one, that the DPW address the drainage issue at.
Oh, Mr. President?
Yep.
Would you mind reading complete, um, please read, uh, uh, item number forty completely?
That the DPW find a new location for the old Community Field plaque. The plaque has the late and great Marty Dunn's name on it. The plaque has been taken down and left on its back since the renovation of the park. And forty-one, I read, so these are all to be receive and referred to DPW?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes, please.
Uh, so receive and adopt, send to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Uh, Mr. President, let me see. I think these are filed under my name. Uh, I think, uh, Mr. President suspended, say, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five. Go to, put as a package and ship them off to DGR, please.
Second.
Motion is suspend the rules, take up forty-two to forty-five as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abbreviated reading, or that the city council, um, accept surplus property for, uh, proper approximately five thousand square feet, uh, downtown residential for thirty-four thousand five hundred. Uh, and that's Clemente Street. Uh, another one for Clemente Street is forty-three. Uh, forty-four is a plan for redeveloping City of Hoyoke as amended under the December fifteenth, twenty twenty, uh, to the redevelopment authority, a parcel of land. Um, and then forty-five, uh, another one from the, uh, Hoyoke Redevelopment Authority, another parcel of land downtown Hoyoke. Uh, all these to DJNR?
Yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All the opposed? Forty-six.
Ordinance.
Oh, let me.
And Disability Commission?
And disabilities.
Forty-six, that a handicap sign be placed in front of one twenty, uh, one twenty-two Brown Ave. So, that'd be to.
Ordinance and copy to disabilities.
Copy to the commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Forty-seven was already done. Forty-eight, the city of council amend Rule thirty-four by adding naming and renaming referred to in Charter and Rules. So, this should send to Charter and Rules?
Yeah, it's just under discussion. So, it, it, it's just a simple, I know we got it sent to Charter and Rules. Uh, uh, 'cause I filed an order a couple of times about how we name and rename. So, it just seemed to me that when I was looking at this rule, when I was reviewing it, it says, "The petitions for laying out widening, alternate, al- altering, relocating streets or ways shall be presented to the city council and by them referred to the Board of Public Works." So, I thought that we should, we should just make it explicit in there. If we're gonna rename, you know, they do it anyhow. We just say name and rename streets. So, should go to the, I thought we just put it in the rules and make it clear as we can make it.
So, that one to Charter and Rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty-eight, forty-nine?
Forty-nine.
Is the city amend the zoning ordinances to allow front yard pools by special permit of city council and other necessary changes to pool ordinances?
Yes, to ordinance, please.
To ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Fifty from Counsel Leahy, Counsel McGee. Order that, uh, representatives of Massachusetts Division of Fishery and Wildlife and the Animal Control Officer come before Public Service Committee to discuss the plan regarding increased amount of wildlife in the city.
Yeah, receive and send to Public Service and, um, also a copy to the, um, uh, whoever's listed there. This was a constituent request.
So, motion is to receive, send to Public Service with a copy to Massachusetts Division of Fishery and Wildlife and our Animal Control Officer?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifty-one from Counsel Leahy, Counsel Barley, that a spreadsheet be sent to the city counselors on the, uh, quarterly basis from the mayor's office and or ours office with the following information regarding marijuana industries in Hoyoke. One, name and address, owner, order address, business phone number, tax, uh, paid till present, taxes paid in prior calendar year, and how tax revenues were used.
Mr. President? Mayor and the auditor. Could I be on, added that, please? Sure, absolutely.
Adding Counsel Graney. And where'd you want it to go, Counsel Leahy?
Um, the auditor and the, um, mayor.
Do you want it to, just a communication back? Do you want it to go to finance or something to?
Or finance, too. That's a good idea.
So, sent to finance with a copy to auditor and collector?
Well.
Counsel Barley?
Yeah, I just, I, I, I want to receive and adopt this. Okay. And then I, I want to send a copy. I don't think it has to go to finance, per, per, but I, I want to say it's a DGR, so I can just have it, have it in there. And then we'll, we'll, since we're gonna get the reports anyhow, we'll just leave it in the jacket. And when we get the reports, we'll just review it in committee. So.
All right, so.
Give finance half a break.
Motion is receive, adopt.
Yeah, send a copy to DGR just for, for holder. And then, and obviously, everything goes to the mayor anyhow. So, but you should probably just add the mayor to it as well.
All right, so motion is receive, adopt, copy to DGNR, and to the mayor, auditor, tax collector.
Yep.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifty-two, uh, the Honorable City Council invite in OPEC Director and representatives from the Wind Development to write an update at two sixteen Appleton project. So, send that to DGNR.
Mr., uh, the President?
Yeah, Counsel Tomlin.
I, I don't know if that, uh, it must have got that. I think tomorrow there's gonna be an announcement.
Yeah, they still want to come in to.
Come in to.
Yeah, come and update in the project. I know they got the, the tax incentives that they wanted to go forward, but they wanted to give an update.
Okay.
The whole project. So, to DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you add my name to that?
Yep. Fifty-three is the municipal election for the City of Hoyoke for November second, twenty twenty-one. Uh, the polling locations, the polls will open at seven AM, close at eight PM. And then it gives a list of all the offices that are up for election.
Motion received.
Motion is to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fifty-four, uh, this is the polling locations, uh, throughout the city for November second, twenty twenty-one. Once again, seven AM to eight PM. Motion is to receive.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
President, we, we have to adopt these.
Receive and adopt?
Yes.
Motion to receive and adopt.
Yes.
So, fifty-three and fifty-four would be receive and adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, fifty-four. All right, fifty-five. From Council McGee, that the council meeting for November second be rescheduled because that is the election day. So, we'd have to cancel the meeting for the second and look to reschedule. Or do you want to do what we just did for this meeting?
Yeah, it worked out well.
Yeah.
All right, so, motion is just to cancel the meeting for November second. If something comes up, we can.
Have a special meeting, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Fifty-six, from Council McGee, that order that the Board of Health, Community Development, and Mayor do a survey of the city hall and city annex in order to prioritize the need for improvements, i.e. elevators, mold removal, bad carpeting, et cetera. It's a public safety issue.
I could, Mr. President.
Council Murphy.
Yeah, just, I mean, we have approved four million dollars for improving many of our city buildings, including the annex and city hall and the Board of Health, the Department of Public Works, and a variety of other people have been involved in that process. And a lot of the things you listed on here are part of that. We're just going through, I know there's some things that they won't be able to do till springtime on the outside in terms of roof and a few other things, but I know internally, I think they're gonna be working to try to get some of this stuff moving pretty quickly, so.
Yeah, I was talking to Alicia Zoller, I know this will go to committee, but there were other things that were gonna be missed in that packaging potentially. So, that's why we're asking for a survey to make sure we don't miss anything, especially that mold issue. But I'd just say, send this to public safety and get the survey or get a list of everything you're doing and we'll have a final answer to it. So, public safety, all those in favor?
Aye.
Fifty-seven, that the, order that the mayor and city council review and approve locations of departments and, department or departments to unused spaces like the tax collector and personnel office. These spaces are forward-facing spaces for better access to our constituents. Recommendation would potentially, whatever we want to do is move planning there so that way people have access to planning, the clerk and everything else, to then get things done quicker and not have vacant spaces that we look at.
Receive and send to the mayor.
So, my motion would be receive and send to the mayor for recommendation. Mayor Murphy, Council Murphy.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of space that we do not use well. And I would certainly agree with the idea of using, I met them where we used to have the management assistance program across from the mayor's office is in dire need of having a better function than we have there, the old task collector. I do use the old task collector's office for when I've had meetings and I knew I had fifteen or twenty people, it's a relatively good place to have a meeting. But other than that, it's pretty neglected. So, there's a lot of things and I have actually taken some departments around to see if it would work for them in terms of moving it to make it more effective. So, I've done some of that, but I would really, I think I should defer to whoever the mayor elect will be and let them work with the department heads. I know I've had some say they'd like to do that, but then they need to have more offices additionally. So, I think it's a great idea.
Public service.
Off to committee.
Send to public service.
Uh, Council Bartley? Yeah, you can send it to public service all you want, which is great. Send a copy to the receiver, ask somebody from the school department to come over to this beautiful building and figure out someplace where they can come over here and figure out where they can plant their offices and move out of Suffolk Street. I mean, this is a gong show that's been going on for ten years. What are ten years, what am I talking about? You know, forever. I mean, I'm thinking of the former mayor that was sitting on his hands for ten years doing nothing.
Mr. President?
And, you know, maybe something could have been done. So, I'm glad, but I appreciate the acting mayor at least looking at it, but, you know, he's got four thousand things on his plate and at least he's taking them up. At least he's showing up to work. Thank you.
Council Graney.
That moved to the tune of two hundred and sixty-five grand a year that we're paying in rent. Thank you.
All right, so, to public service, copy to the receiver, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifty-eight is from Council McGivern.
Make a motion to suspend the rules, Mr. President, to take up as a package fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-four, sixty-five, and sixty-six.
Second.
Motion is take fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-four, sixty-five, and sixty-six as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, abbreviated reading. Fifty-eight is the fiscal year twenty twenty-two municipal road safety grant, forty-one thousand six fifty. Fifty-nine is a transfer of twenty-eight thousand two sixty from heavy motor equipment to refuge. Sixty is appropriate for fiscal year, three thousand five hundred from head clerk to personnel director. Sixty-one is four thousand from pay directly to pay program coordinator and assistant. Sixty-four is, looks like a bond for one point, one million nine hundred eighteen thousand two hundred dollars for several, the sidewalks, Robert Field Track, so on and so forth. Sixty-five is the American Rescue Plan Act, seven million seven hundred ninety-two thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars. And sixty-six is expenses of one hundred forty-seven thousand seven thirty-four twenty-three. So, it's hereby appropriate that amount as follows from other expenses, but doesn't say where it's going to.
Is that what we did earlier or no, with the schools? No. No? That's not it, the one forty-seven?
You might want to check with sixty-six as to how it was drafted and just follow up on that. Council Murphy?
Yeah, I can, I can do that every time, but I know what it is, is they had some equipment that used to be part of some of the former shops at Dean that they were able to sell. And so, I know they've come back in and asked, and they're going to upgrade. I know they're gonna come in with specifics in terms of what they're upgrading, but this is basically taking the money they got for the sale of things to get equipment for the shops that they are now having and upgrading that equipment. I know one of them is carpentry and there were several others, but that's what that is.
Yeah, you just have to.
Yep.
Because it doesn't, I guess, flow correctly, so that's what I say. So, all those to finance, all those in favor?
My answer, we're meeting on October thirteenth because that's the only date our administrative assistant would give us.
All right. Next is sixty-two, which is the injured on duty account.
Make a motion, we can do sixty-two and sixty-three as a package, please?
Motion to pick up sixty-two and sixty-three as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All sixty-two is for the firefighters, two thousand two hundred twenty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents to injured on duty. Next is the police officers, which is thirty-three thousand seven hundred seventy-four dollars and twenty-eight cents to injured on duty. I do not have with it the breakdown that you normally ask me of those two, the numbers of total people. So, just to let you know on that. So, motion would be receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Council McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, as I think we know, this is just an accounting move. When public safety employees, firefighters, policemen go down in the line of duty, it may just be a temporary, sometimes this happens on the weekend and they have to go out injured on duty until they can be vetted through the firm that looks at the, that the question of the injury is. This is just to allow us to know that we're spending this amount of dollars, although at the time, it's the salary they deserve and rightfully have. It just takes it out of the mainstream so we know exactly what we spent on people who are working on duty.
Standard procedure for us. Motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. The clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for sixty-two and sixty-three.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon? Yes. Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Ananmas.
Your vote, you approve that one. Sixty-seven from Council Murphy, order that chapter two, article two, division six, Ministry of Assistance to the City Council duties generally be amended to add additional categories of duties pertaining to management and updating the city webpage and social media accounts. So, this one would be to.
Is it ordinance?
Ordinance?
Is that an ordinance?
I think it's an ordinance, so, to ordinance.
Really quickly, I'd just like to thank our administrative assistant. First of all, he stepped up when some other people left. He's done a great job. I just want to see if we can upgrade his position and provide him with a pay that represents the additional duties that he's taken on. And he's done them very well. I've heard only complimentary things from all the people in departments that have come to him as well as from people in the community. So, I thank you, I want to thank you, Jeffrey, publicly and I do hope that we can do this and then provide you with additional pay.
All right, so, to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 There's only a few late files. A from Council Bacon, H G and E install a streetlight at pole number two Cross Road in front of one fifty-five Cross Road.
If we could suspend rules and take final action, I'd appreciate it. It's a safety issue on cross and it was a late request from a constituent.
Motion would be to suspend the rules, take final action.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion would be receive, adopt.
Receive, adopt, and refer to H G and E, and they're ready to do it. They just needed me to put it through officially. Thank you.
All right, so, motion is to receive, adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
B is from Council Anderson Burgos and Council McGee, order that the city council issue a proclamation in honor of raising the flag. Council Bartley did point out the date, October fifteenth. Thank you for that, for raising the Puerto Rican flag to celebrate the culture. Take up final action. Motion would be receive, adopt, and confirm the proclamation, and they'll have it ready for the fifteenth.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? D is from Council McGivern. It is a transfer of eighteen thousand one hundred and one dollars and seventy-seven cents from firefighters alarm division over to chief, captains, lieutenants, and supervisors.
Send to finance?
To finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 E is also from Council McGivern, eight, taking from eight to the mayor, eleven thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars to Sanitarian head clerk, floating clerk, so on and so forth. So, that would also go to finance.
Just so everybody knows, these are the two transfers that go hand in hand with the two contracts negotiated that we received this evening.
Okay, so, that's the finance as well, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
F is from Council Murphy, order that the city council consider merging the Hoyoke Historic Commission and Historic District Commission. So, that would go to charter and rules?
Yeah, I think charter.
Charter and rules?
Charter and rules.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Whoop, that dropped some. Thank you, sir, sorry. Last one is G from Council McGee, order that the finance committee or public safety committee invite in DPW to discuss the meters outside. There are some that are bent that could be hit by a car. There's some that don't even have tops and you can't collect money. So, looking for addressing the safety issues as well as what are the revenues being collected on meters that don't exist. So, to say.
Finance?
Finance.
Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any updates, Mr. President?
I didn't get one yet. Motion to.
Four to one.
Uh-oh, oh, what happened?
Yeah, baby, yeah, baby!
End of the six, four to one. I got you out of here, you got plenty of time.